We'll go ahead and start the study session here and our first is our mixed use workforce housing. Concept and yeah, so go ahead and take it away. I don't know which is Gavin or.
So yes, Kevin Kane here again with the Housing Authority of Shalane County to talk a little bit about. The pits and building some amazing workforce housing. Add some parking in there too, some covered parking. I'd like to introduce Isabel Garcia. She works with ORF, the Office of Rural and Farmworker Housing. She's one of our developers. And then also Mark in ZB A Architecture and Stephanie Davis, also the ZB A Architecture. Who did the the renderings that I hope you guys have all had a chance to look at. That we wanted to talk with you about today. And so I guess just that would be a great way to start off is do you guys have any questions about the. The plans and drawings that you guys received.
Did you change anything from?
I will leave. Mark is going to share his screen here if he was able to do so and he made a couple of little changes. And Mark can talk a little bit about his drawings and. Some of the ways that we can, I know that parking is one of the things that is a big topic discussion when we're talking about building there. And there's some definite ways that we can increase the parking stop even on top of what Mark has shown in his drawings. The drawings, the renderings that you're seeing are really only utilizing that sunken portion of that parking lot. And none of the adjacent lot such as the lot that has the coffee shop on it. Which if we were able to use to add parking, there's some ways that we could do a service slot or even. Extend the building that way as well. But again, I'll let Mark talk a little bit about that if there's questions about parking as well.
I just had a general question about access. Is the main access point off of? Kind of the intersection of Front Street and Division, or is there also an access point off of Highway two?
All the access would be from the, all the vehicle access would be from the rear off of Front Street and Division.
Okay.
The intent was that a highway two would be a pedestrian access. And continuing of what you have done landscape wise. Adjacent in front of the big town hall and just kind of continuing a. To create a pedestrian. Pedestrian ways along Highway two.
Are you assuming that each unit's going to take one parking spot?
Yes, there would be one parking spot allotted to each one of the apartments.
So what happens if they have two cars? So we got twenty six units. Let's assume they all have two cars.
They would only get one parking spot allotted and so kind of what we're calculating in is that each one of the units would get a allotted parking spot. And the rest of the parking would remain a city parking. So well. If they wanted to park there, they would be paying an hourly rate to do so.
Only up, okay.
They could use the parking permit program potentially.
Yeah.
And because this is really focused toward that workforce housing. I know Leavenworth and really what we're talking about is housing Leavenworth residents that are here and working in Leavenworth. Right. I think that we're going to have a lot of folks that are going to ride their bikes for most of, you know, the shops and eateries are going to be within walking or riding distance of where this location is. And so that would be what I would be expecting. We see more of those people with less vehicles rather than.
Given emissions and electrical vehicle type requirements that are coming down the pipe. I, is it too early to ask if? EV. How EV bakes into these parking spots? How many of these are going to be electrical vehicle charge stations if any of them are? Or if this is all assuming these are all internal combustion engines that are parking here overnight because most people when they park. If they have an electrical vehicle, they'll plug their vehicle in overnight.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Oh, sorry to interrupt. Based on the new codes going into effect in July. Roughly thirty percent of your parking will have EV capabilities. Ten percent will be required to have. The. Charging pedestals, everything there all ready to go. Another ten percent. Has to have basically just a receptacle and then the last ten percent, my understanding will just have the infrastructure that you could then run the wires to. Currently, there's lots of. Availability for funding to or grants and what have you to get the pedestals from a lot of the manufacturers and those kinds of things. Even the power companies have been incentivizing. And helping like here in the Spokane area Vista at affordable housing basically will put those pedestals in for. The Housing Authority or or any other nonprofit that has affordable housing at free of charge. So. It's coming and 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 once we hit the new codes in July first. We're going to be looking at at least thirty percent of all parking lots associated with housing will have the infrastructure there and ready to go. So it's, it's, it's coming.
Forgot to add when I was introducing ZB A Architecture that they've worked with us on a lot of different projects. But interestingly enough, they are working with us on both the Garden House project at Leavenworth. And the Bavarian Village we have project at Leavenworth. And so ZB A is extraordinarily familiar with. The city of Leavenworth, which is why that we asked them to help us with this project.
Other questions to begin?
Would you like me to run through kind of the concepts where we, what we did and why we did what we did?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So starting out, the bold outline here is the site roughly two acres. Your town hall, festival hall is right here where my cursor is. And the parking for it is this parking lot here along Highway two. We left it intact, did not touch it. The big retaining walls. Encompass three sides really of this parking lot and. We we kind of got nicknamed the pit because it is a pit of a, you know, the parking lot's down in a pit. So we basically took just this area with those walls and and looked at what a housing complex would look like there. And then the coffee shop is currently over here and and we did not go beyond this area right here and touch anything going on in the coffee shop. This parking lot currently has roughly seventy seven total parking spaces based on my last count. There's a couple funky things going on that. The the stall sizes don't quite meet your zoning code. They're close. And then these cars backing across the property line and backing into the street also have some issues with your. Your zoning code. Now, you know, this may have been in place prior to the current code or zoning code. Anyway, it it just has a few things and. We don't have a true survey, so that could also be what's going on here. This was. Derived from the assessor's map. Based on parcel information that we had and then Google Earth and then visiting the site. So we don't have. Definitive data on the actually locations of the property lines and some of those things. So. This is very conceptual to get this in front of you for review and and see what what kind of concepts we could do. So with that. The building here then takes over a good portion of the site with parking underneath it. And again, we don't have topographical information, but based on just some quick field measuring, we're looking at two levels of parking. In the pit and then the first level that's the first level of. Retail would be along Highway two at the parking lot or at the, excuse me, at the sidewalk level. And then we'd have. Housing above that. So um, let me get to it. This would be. One of your levels of parking, we chose to do one-way parking. Directional elevator access up to. The first level, we would anticipate that the public could use probably one of these parking garage levels and be able to use the elevator to get to. The level of of Highway two or the or the main street going through town. So it gives you the ability to provide some covered parking. The other level of parking kind of came in the same way, but we would. We'd probably make this restricted to people living there and the elevators, we could work, work that with a key card system or something of that nature. And then once you got up to the street level, this is Highway two across the front. We just divided it into currently five large retail spaces. Ranging about twenty, about from about twenty four hundred square feet to three thousand two hundred square feet. Nick, they, we could also continue to divide that up and then a covered promenade along Highway two. And then lobby space and the elevators and what have you. And then above that would be one bedroom apartments. In the shaded in the light blue and then a different style apartment, one bedroom also in the the other blue here. Corridor and then mechanical electrical spaces. So now the units themselves are roughly five hundred and seventy six square feet. Main entry this way and then your bedroom with windows. These are a couple different just layouts that we proposed for that particular. Size and style of unit that that the Housing Authority. It's very similar to what they they currently have in their portfolio and and maintain. This is just a section through the building, parking level here, another parking level here, the retail and then housing up above. And then we did a quick rendering of what it might look like from the exterior. Right here, you can kind of get a glimpse of the town hall in the background and then right along Highway two. This was a picture that was taken, I think your crews were actually working on the the. The walls of the pit. We 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 tried to Photoshop out some of it, but but we weren't able to get the truck out very well. So. So, so we end up with fifty two total housing units. And seventy eight total parking spaces. Now, as as Kevin had mentioned, we can look at and continue to look as we continue to refine information. Get survey information, that kind of thing, even maybe looking at the espresso. Stand area of the lot. I I think we we can definitely get some more parking into this. Because it sounds like parking is a very of 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 concern. And so I think continuing to. Refine the concept and continuing to work with you and and explore what else can happen on the site. We can, we can definitely, I I think we can improve on more parking and 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 provide, I think, more of what you're you're looking for. Maybe there's a parking count you are looking for and and that's, this is the beginning of that discussion.
I was wondering why all the one bedroom. Because some of the workers have kids. But it doesn't look like this would be a friendly.
This probably wouldn't be the place because it's downtown. It's it's looking more at. At those that wouldn't have family with independent sites.
And that was the thought process, the idea that, and especially in previous discussions I've had with the community council, that it seemed that. This structure would have been more used for that workforce housing. Singular couples and not so much for a family. Although, you know, a small family could live there.
If somebody wanted to live there, but they worked in Wenatchee, but they just wanted to live in Leavenworth, would that be a disqualification?
I don't think with the funding sources, we can actually limit. Who lives there to a specific geographical area. And so I think if somebody qualified, lived in Wenatchee or worked in Wenatchee and wanted to apply. I don't think that you could disqualify them based on the location of their job.
Is there an age limit? Upper age limit?
We do have age restricted properties that are senior properties, but because this would be workforce housing would not be restricted.
But if a senior wanted to work or was working.
Oh, they still live there. It's just the age or strict. So anybody's, you know, of an adult, adult age could.
I have a question on. Page three, the retail drawing. So I see the highway side, those are up there, right? Right. How does the loading work if that is one, two levels off street levels?
So I was looking at bringing in a loading zone. Let's find it here. It could either be in this area or we could utilize one of these corners. So that loading. Or right here, actually, I have a, sorry, hang on. It could also be right here because of the grade off of Front Street, there could be a loading area here coming in. And that was also why the trash recycle was here because it could be. The grade starts to drop on Front Street going down this way. So. I I'm not quite sure, but I'm I'm hopeful that this is close to grade and we could utilize this space as a loading zone and trash and recycle zone. And that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't. It drops pretty quick, especially in this corner, but. Like, how do you, how do you back a truck up to that? I mean, when you're talking, when you're saying loading zone, I don't know if you're thinking what I'm thinking. I'm thinking. Gigantic food service trucks. Beer semis. Not just UPS or FedEx.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not thinking the full on semi, maybe a a tractor with a pup trailer at the most, but.
Because if you take that, because if you take that largest retail space. And you make it. There's going to be a truck there every single day, you know?
It could be right here and and so some of that we have not, you know, or they. Yeah, I I would not want them to to block this access into the parking garage. We'd also have parking garage access right here. So it's in this corner.
Yeah, and if you get, yeah, then I don't know if they would even deliver.
Could potentially come in through the.
Yeah, yeah, there could be a loading zone over here. And again, I I didn't, I didn't opt to go past. The pit on this edge here, although it's, you know, it's. There's a lot more land over here that could be utilized for some of that or parking or, but I didn't want to disrupt. I wasn't sure what's going on with the espresso stand, you know? Didn't want to disrupt an operational business and that kind of thing, so.
And then on the community room, what what is the thinking beyond that?
A lot of times with our properties, we have community rooms for. Just in general activities, things like that. A lot of our properties have a community kitchen space. If you live in a garden house, probably you have a nice community kitchen space.
And that would be different than the game room on the. Residential floor.
Yeah, there would just be different spaces or different rooms. So generally, game rooms have like a little library, bookshare type thing for clients.
Is this for all the different eighty percent, hundred and twenty percent, you know, the thirty percent? Is this? Just for one of those or is it for all?
We would like to have eighty percent or above for the majority of the property, eighty percent of that AMI or above, because that really gets the workforce housing. Twenty five bucks up to hundred and twenty percent of that amount. Some of the units for the funding sources that we would most likely be using, and Isabel can speak a little to this as well. Have a requirement that some of them would most likely have to be of the thirty percent AMI. But. A lot of times we can get a variance. Where some of them are set aside for thirty, some are set aside for fifty, some are set aside for a buck, which we do have at our properties.
So it's the same apartment, but just different people paying different prices.
Yes, a different, a different set of qualifying standards for your financial. So. How much money you have as an income would be that qualifier.
And when you came last time, if I remember correctly, you. You said that the city of Leavenworth won't pay for any of it. We have funding for everything.
He would seek auxiliary funding. Yes.
So auxiliary meaning we're not paying anything or paying part of it?
A lot of times we seek funding through like USDA, R D, World Development, those types of funding services. Who would you be looking to to do the bill, the new construction?
Will you know that before you start?
Yes, we would. We would not start without the fully funded.
I'd assume that these would be really attractive. Really. It would be competitive to get here. People would want, people, there are a lot of people would want to live here. Because they are attached to requirements, can you walk me through? With similar projects like this, turnover rates, how that works? If you're, you know, if you receive. A very small raise and you happen to be two hundred dollars over the limit, are you going to have to find a new place to live next year? Like, how does that whole? Is it reviewed on an annual basis once you're in, you're in? Can you walk me through that a little bit?
I can. And so some of it is dependent on the funding source that we receive. And so they'll have their own requirements for how we, how we manage that. So like tax credit properties. Tax credit properties, they don't have that, it's one small by all small. And so if you qualify at the time that you move in, regardless of how your income changes, that's imposed, you're still qualified. Other properties, you do have to do annual or semi-annual certifications for your income. And where. Your income raised, like for example, Garden House, the thirty two units that are existing, which is based on thirty percent of your income. Right? So. Regardless of how much you make, your thirty percent of your income is going to go toward your rent.
Sure.
So. That's kind of how it can be dependent on the learning sources. So there are certain situations where somebody's income went above a certain limit where we would have to ask that person to find another house and take them under. Qualified for the housing that we have at home.
We try to find them housing.
Absolutely. Yeah, and we have a housing department that works to place them.
Can I make a suggestion to the architecture firm?
Oh, absolutely.
Because of the parking lot next door that hosts Oktoberfest and other events. I wouldn't like this thing against noise. People across up here, they say, I'm moving out of town, he's standing.
I hope it's all be busy working.
That would be great, but you know what?
Yeah.
I wouldn't take the chance.
I hear what you're saying.
I think bump it up for noise back there. Absolutely.
Some of it is also you know what you're getting into.
That's true too. You know what? Once they sang on a dotted line, they don't care.
You know, there's festival, festival. Oh, yeah, I did want to speak a little bit to the competitiveness of this property. I think you're very right. That is a good thing for the Housing Authority because that means that we can build a waitlist for the property where somebody does move out. We already have a waitlist of people that are ready to try it. Most of our properties do have a fairly extensive waitlist. Some of them are up into the top people years on the waitlist.
And that was what I was getting to because my concern wasn't necessarily that there would be vacancy rate there. It would be that. Once people are in, they would, especially because there's no other stair step, right? There's here and then. The next housing tier here in town is up here. So they would be. There's a real. Disincentive. To 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 move out frankly, because what else is there? And that's to say, you know. I'm not saying don't have it because you need it anyway. I'm just saying, you know, once people move in there, are those people going to be there for the next ten years? And there really won't be a. An opportunity for others.
For folks that, yeah, especially if their income changes that. So, yeah.
Right.
It's interesting.
Does anybody pay, or any entity pay property tax on it? Does any entity pay property tax to the city on it?
We're, we're taxing sent to the Housing Board.
Okay. So nobody here pays pays property taxes?
Housing would, the retail would give.
And the idea behind the retail space too is, and then we talked about this a little before, is the retail space would be affordable retail spaces there as well. What we've talked about. Is having like a qualifying standard where we have. Priority going to female or minority owned small businesses and kind of having an application process to get in there where we're putting emphasis on. People that need that retail spaces.
But whoever is in the retail space would pay taxes. The property taxes?
Yes, because I think they would not be taxed as, I mean, I'm just assuming that whoever would occupy that space would not be taxed.
They would have to have business licenses and that kind of stuff. So, yeah.
It wasn't a property tax because they don't own the property. This is true. Or pay B and O tax or or would pay. A used tire and sell and generate the sales tax, but. No property tax would be generated from that.
Yes, because we would be the owners.
Correct.
Do you, do you as a business person pay property taxes?
No, not on my space. No. If I, when I own the building, I did.
Yeah, I was just going to say the owner of the building.
Yeah, right. So you pay. B and O tax, just like. And that's no different than. Yourself, you know, but. Paying access, you pay personal property tax on equipment. To a certain dollar value. So if you have. You know, if you're, let's say you're, you got espresso stand that's got. Coffee makers and machines and refrigerators, you pay a personal property tax on that every year.
Really? Okay.
The other thing I don't know about and Kevin, you might know is how the parking. Agreement with the city would work. Maybe there's revenue generated for the city based on parking use.
Right? Yeah, and that's the idea is so the city would be able to. Or increase their parking stops where it would be their hourly parking.
Not, not with the people that live there though.
Yes.
Well, if they live there, they want to pay hours of parking, they could.
But they would have a parking spot.
Yes.
So anybody else that comes in. Because I know they have, there were some issues. Out at the behind Safeway. Where people have their parking spot. And somebody else was in it and there's a lot of stuff there. So people that came to visit them couldn't park because someone else was parked there.
It's a, it's an issue that comes with having a parking lot in Leavenworth. Both of the properties that we have, we have pretty much. Continuous parking infiltration issues that. We have to deal with. It's actually, it'd be a lot easier if you had interior parking to manage that. So that would be the nice part about having that interior parking start.
So would the parking be gated? Or? So that access would be, so if you live there, you got a key card.
That's the idea. That's earlier to the, the top two floors, you have to have a key.
Or you pay to get out.
Just out of curiosity. Why is the proposed building smaller than the total footprint of that lower pit area?
It it had to do with the module of the housing unit. Otherwise, it it kind of has to do with the overall module of the entire. Property as well. For a one bedroom, roughly, you know, just under six hundred square feet. Sixteen feet wide is about as narrow as you're going to want to get and then the depth. Were. I can't remember right now. We're like thirty six feet deep or forty feet deep. And so it it just had to do with the module of the housing. And I haven't continued, you know, that's the next step is to continue exploring, see if, you know, can we? Do. Cover more of the site with the housing, get more housing and maybe work in some more parking too. This was a. Very rough concept first pass at it, so.
Yeah, because my suggestion would be move that community room. And turn that into retail because it's a prime piece of real estate that. May get used sometimes may.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, yep, that could happen too.
Yeah.
Definitely. And and a lot of us in here, it's just very conceptual and so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I know you have to develop or would never do that.
I'd be curious. To see some information with regard to various different access points off of Front Street. There's also a kind of an odd angled right of way that goes uphill towards the espresso stand. That could potentially be utilized as an access point rather than in near that intersection. But I'd love to know kind of what sort of traffic impacts ultimately are going to be associated with this, this design and. Where we can potentially. Look at ways of mitigating traffic. I mean, we've already got lots of. Lots of tourists that circle around these areas clogging up intersections, looking for places to park.
It, and that was part of the reason for the access off of the, you know, not off the main highway. So that that you weren't plugging up the main highway with access points coming and going. And then, and then. Making it, it, yeah, coming off of Front Street and and Division Street there. But yeah, you're right. This, this. This kind of odd right away. I'm not sure what it is. It's, maybe it's the continuation of Division at one point or something. Yeah.
Is that drawing correct? Because I thought that that piece of property got squared up. Is that drawing correct? Because I thought that that piece of property got squared up.
This is based on the assessor's information that we could find online. So if, yeah.
We we did have a boundary line adjustment request. Um, but it it never was finalized.
Okay.
Yeah. And that is public right of way in between based on an old plat.
And and then, you know, that might be the the time to plat, change the plating of this, adjust it, you know, do something. I don't, you know, I I don't know.
Well, if they develop the piece next to it, that would be the time to kind of.
This here?
Yes.
Yeah.
See if there's ways to combine access on both sides.
Would you point again to where you pointed? I was looking down and didn't see.
Right along here, these trees area.
Yeah.
Is that where the coffee shop is?
It's like a coffee shop, literally right here. Yeah. And, you know, there's.
But there's that other road that goes down to the Evergreen Hotel. That's on that other piece.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been.
Is it DOS copy shop is over here?
Yeah.
Must be, and Studio Two, um, I'm looking at a Google Earth off Twelfth Street. So.
Studio Two and the coffee shop are two different buildings.
No, it's a DOS copy shop.
Copy, copy.
Copy.
That's in the next building. Oh, that's the next building. But there's a piece between them.
That is that on Front Street?
Let me, um.
Looks like Jason and Marco.
Yeah, I know. I'm just waiting for this to wrap up. Um.
And so here's here's Twelfth.
Yeah.
And the Studio Two and DOS copy shop. Leavenworth finest espresso and then the pit. So that weird thing, piece of land is right kind of through here. It looks like there's a dirt road going up it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've got a couple of questions online there. So Jason?
Yeah, I'm so, so sorry about being late today. Um, I love the concept. I think for us at the council, we need to we need to give direction on the footprint because where that espresso stand is, it would be a shame to not include that in these early planning stages. So I think we need to budget some time in the future to talk about that piece of the property. But overall, I really like the concept. I know it's a first draft and I have a lot of questions, but um I'm coming in late. I don't wanna, don't wanna ask much questions because I might have missed them. But like the concept, I think we need to figure out the espresso piece of the parcel. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Marco?
Hey, again, sorry. Like Jason, I was late. Uh, my prescribed fire class ran a little late, so I had to scramble to get a hotel. I was originally but I didn't think a Zoom from camping would work very well. So couldn't find an outlet. Anyway, um, uh, Mark, thank you for presenting this. I know this is kind of a springboard from the last time you came. One of my questions is, um, is this sustainable in terms of economics? Like, I know you have a lot of place for housing and I I love the idea of housing and affordable housing, but is it gonna sustain itself? Are you gonna have to keep looking for grant money and donations and that kind of thing?
Kevin, I I'm gonna say maybe that's more geared towards you, but I I can say that, you know, Garden House was built in, I want to say nineteen seventy-one. I originally visited visited the property in two thousand thirteen. It was full then. We've added eight more units and I believe everything leased up almost immediately upon those units uh being available to lease up. We're still wrapping some things up there, but uh maybe Kevin can talk more about, you know, that property as a prime example of of Leavenworth and the need for housing.
Absolutely. Yes. And then all of our properties are self-sustaining in that way. The only time that we would reach out uh for additional funding from a funding source would be at the time for rehab where we wanted to do some type of upgrades to the property similar to what we're doing at Garden House, the very village right now. Um, and that's just to elongate the estimated use lap of the property so we can continue to use it to provide housing to the community. And so um when we do the budgeting for these projects, what we calculate is is to make sure that our income or our revenue for the project is gonna be enough to sustain the project, but also for our management as well, because we do manage our properties.
Okay. No, it's a great answer and I I really look forward to it being affordable. However, it's um, i- is that based on you purchasing the property or the city donating the property to you?
Um, so far, assumption has been based on the city donating the property to us.
Okay, no, I'm just making a straightforward um uh kind of clarification on that. I I'm kind of leaning towards what Tibor said earlier. Um, I I firmly believe that turning this into a mixed-use property so that there could be actual you know, significant revenue from like the ground floor with some commercial space, because it is prime real estate. And let's say you took uh the top of it and turned it into either a restaurant or a prime use, um, you know, penthouse that was full, you know, full cost real estate and not not affordable, but everything else be affordable. That way, you know, you could kind of, it could be income generating and pay back a loan that you would, you know, take out to buy the property because I I think for that prime location, mixed use is the best use. Um, because it's more bang for the buck than than just, you know, income, low income housing is great, but for the value of that piece of property on the outskirts of town, you know, somewhere where it's less expensive, you could get triple or four times the amount of housing, the amount of stuff in there. In other words, if Leavenworth sold that piece of property, right? At prime real estate market and took that money and built what you're proposing somewhere outside of town, you know, near town, but you know, within reasonably accessible to the downtown quarter, but further away, I think we would get two or three times the value in number of units. That's just my personal opinion. I mean, I'm not a real estate guru, but I I could see that happening. Um, you know, I agree that it shouldn't be surface parking. I think something needs to happen there and I think this is a great proposal because it's the right direction. We do need affordable housing and I like I like your uh I like the creativity you guys are working towards and I really, I think we can ki- kind of find some kind of balance in the future. Because this is, you know, just pure housing there. If you go into most downtowns in Europe that have, you know, overgrown their their boundaries and needed to put in affordable housing and you know, um denser housing, it's always mixed use. It's never just housing. Always got shops and stuff on the bottom and then maybe something up top.
Well, Marco, this one is a mixed use. If you look at.
Marco, this has a floor of.
Of retail, right?
Okay, I didn't see that. I apologize for that then. I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Okay. Well, and so those would be rented out affordably or would those go full retail or would that be like trying to get people into business who who need a kind of a a lift?
That's that's what the idea was, is they would also be affordable spaces to try to go and and look for prioritizing women-owned and minority businesses and things, trying to get a a hand to start. So, yeah, the the concept is it would also be affordable.
Okay, that's great. I didn't see that. I'm sorry again for coming in late. I didn't see this slide yet. So that's outstanding.
Well, I think for now, we need to wrap this up and and move on, but I think, I mean, I the way I read it, there is some excitement to look at keeping this conversation and tweaking. And I think Jason's suggestion, looking at, do we want to include that other space and give us a little more options that way and but um I appreciate you all being here and um giving us the this first glimpse at what could be a really great project. You have ideas from your side of well, how quickly you would like to see this move or what your thinking is with
the quicker the better when it comes to funding sources. And so really the piece that we would have to have to start to solicit funding for the project is site control. Uh, that's a requirement for every single one of our budgets. And so, and that's what we would be looking at the city council to provide to us if we agree that it's a wonderful project. And and just me, I'm very excited about this project. I see this more as something that it's kind of a legacy, you know? I mean, fifty, sixty years when, you know, I probably not gonna make it that long. This building is still gonna be there serving this community. I love Leavenworth, you know, and uh I would like that. I would like that for the community and I would like to be part of building.
Also, just to add to Kevin's, uh, we are very excited to do it for founder of this property. Um, but site control will also open the door for us to start the feasibility analysis and complete all the survey that Mark needs to um redesign and work on, including apartment spaces and everything else. A complete environmental reports that are necessary required by the tunnel and and all the third-party reporting that we need to do to make sure that the project is physical and that it's gonna be sustainable and to move forward with all the plans. Um, so site control, it's.
And we've got a great team to hit the ground running. We've we've worked extensively with work as a developer and uh basic projects with C. This is a good group.
So I'd be I'd be interested to see if not only, I mean, looking at that triangle, but again, looking at further completing that space, like you've mentioned, that it's not fully covered and is there a way to incorporate and even I don't know, even if there was by adding parking and things. Um, but anyway, I I I mean, I'm intrigued and I again, I think it's a would fit a big niche and a big need and uh I mean, I'd love to see us do something, but but let's we'll we'll mull this and have that conversation about, you know, what we can do to move forward and what it would take and um, we'll be in touch. So.
Any questions, comments or concerns, feel free to reach out to me uh at the housing authority and we'd love to talk to you guys more about this whenever you're ready.
You have a card, Kevin?
Time to.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks for presenting. I really appreciate it and I appreciate the effort you went through to get a design.
Kevin, you got another one of those contacts?
I don't. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, thank you guys so much for your time. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, awesome start.
All right. Moving on to uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Look forward to more discussion.
Yeah. Be great. Um, inclusionary zoning discussion, Willa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, inclusionary zoning is part of the planning commission docket as we've discussed before and the council has requested that come before you, which is um, uh, just a change in processing. So I just want to put it on the record that that that's what's occurring here. Um, and it's completely within your authority and right to uh review it and actually potentially finalize it depending on what section of code it goes into without um having the public hearing through the planning commission. So we just want to acknowledge that the process would be different. In any case, inclusionary zoning is when you mandatorily or voluntarily require uh different housing to be provided at different income levels and it can be affordable housing, as it's often referred to. Um, it can often come with other benefits to the developer such as increased density, height, lock coverage or reduced setbacks. Um, inclusionary zoning can be mandatory or voluntary. Uh, we did as a city adopt inclusionary type of program just last year. It's in uh title eighteen forty-two and I've included that in your packet along with an article from MRSC about inclusionary um zoning. Typically, inclusionary zoning is a uh in defined as affordable when it when it requires thirty percent or less of their income to provide for the rental or purchase of that unit. Um, it requires a certain percent of units within an overall development or a number of units to be provided as affordable housing. And the standard per state law is eighty percent of the average median income for Shalane County or AMI as it's referenced. Eighty percent or below. I know our workforce housing is defined as up to a hundred and twenty percent. So I want to make that uh disclaimer at your initial review of this project potential code amendment so that's clear that it will not necessarily bump up to that one twenty. It it is under state law capped at eighty percent, at least at this time. Typically is limited to a fifty-year mandated affordable. And as you read through the MRSC article, you'll see that they're typically located in a downtown or commercial zones or where mixed-use developments are permitted. And the reason for that is that they're expensive to do. And so developer can offset their losses from the affordable units um because the land values are high enough to generate other developments that bring in more um profit for the development. So that's something to consider as well. Um, they function best in an active housing market, one that's um developing a lot of properties because again, the land values are a little higher. Uh, the once the properties are developed, the sales prices are higher and those components allow for the developer to make them make a profit still, even though they provide certain number of affordable units. On the disadvantaged side, I mean, the advantage is you have mandated affordable units. Uh, the developer does not have to provide the actual unit. The state law provides an out. In other words, they can do a fee in lieu of or a buyout option. It might also be referenced as. So the city needs to have a program for taking that money and utilizing that money if um depending on what we want to do, if that would be an outside group that we provide funds to to achieve the same outcome. Uh, the difficulties are that these programs are a challenge to administer and monitor and make sure that the units are remaining affordable. So you do need a good partner if you don't have a dedicated city program. Um, there are also concerns generally raised by the public that this changes the character of an area. Um, we've seen that through the adoption of our voluntary low-income housing incentives. And I'll talk about that just briefly here. Uh, finally, if your housing market isn't strong enough, robust enough, um, active enough, as I used the term earlier, uh developers tend to opt out.
It's like you're frozen. Like you're you froze up there.
Oh. Okay, uh, developers. Yeah, so developers can opt out if your market isn't strong enough. They'll just build somewhere else because they won't be able to show that it'll make a profit for them long term. So that's another con. Um, it could further impact your housing because they just don't build. Um, what we did adopt for low-income housing incentives is in your packet eighteen forty-two. And basically it allows under the state law for incentives to developers who want to provide affordable units. And in order to make this option available across the board um and to diversify our housing stock within our neighborhoods, the planning commission and city council that adopted this um included that it can occur in residential zones and we do allow for a increase in density in residential zones. That's the primary focus of this code. It does allow for increased lot coverage, reduce yard setbacks, um, access from an alley, although it has to be an approved alley. So that's a another high hurdle to making it practical. Um, it did allow for reduced parking for the lowest income factors, fifty percent or less. Um, I guess that's second to lowest. The next category is usually thirty. But any case, um, we did have that reduced parking option included. And then it does allow for uh increased height in the tourist commercial zone only. And then that's uh spelled out. We also put in some design standards, which we currently apply to other Design standards which we currently apply to other. Residential developments in the city. So that's a lot of information to summarize this program. I hope you had an opportunity to read some of it, at least uh ahead of time. Because it is so much and it is a complex program. If the city council. Ops to uh continue reviewing this, um, the next step would be to develop our own pro and con list. And maybe a draft ordinance that uh could be walked through by the council and eventually provide special. I would imagine a special meeting slash workshop outside of our regular schedules. Because public input might be extensive on this, so I might recommend that. Having said that, uh Jason has his hand up and I'll turn it over to the council.
Thanks, Lilith. Um, I know it's too late for the McDevitt property, but could we use the McDevitt property as an example? If it were, say, three years ago and we adopted some inclusionary housing rules or policies. In your opinion. Would that property not be valuable enough for the developer to still make it financially feasible for themselves? If we said thirty percent of the units had to be affordable? Could we use like a a real life or hypothetical property in town and?
Well, thirty percent, super high. Um, and so that would be a big challenge. The the other main thing here is that this type of code applies to new construction, not land division. So providing um an option for, say, some of the phases in McDevitt moving forward. If they wanted to say townhomes off of Ski Hill was something we talked to one developer about. At least a year and a half ago. Um, if we mandated that the development required inclusionary. Then there's a potential that, you know. That townhouses would would be able to offset the cost of the affordable unit. But my general feel of it is that it's one unit, ten percent, um, maybe even five percent. It's. As if we move forward with this, it may be reasonable to work with a consultant to do the financial analysis. To understand where that break even point is for development, at least under the current market. And that way we can make a realistic ask. Um, so I'm I might recommend that as we move forward if it continues.
Seems like the the numbers you hear most thrown out is the ten percent number, right? I mean, that's the one that I I've seen the most of in different ones. And again, if like you said, that's that's. For projects that that are buildings, not just land divisions. So it's it's waiting for those bigger projects. And I guess if Jason, if you wanted to take up another real life one, it would be the, you know. The Wiener apartments or, you know. Being able to get ten percent of those, you know, um, as as affordable. You know, I I know that's always the argument or that's always the. Um, downside is you make it too onerous and then they won't come and they won't build. But I just don't see that being our market, quite frankly, that that we're going to discourage. Developers. In this market um by having ten percent. But that's just my, I mean, I can't prove it one way or another, but that's just my gut.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I share your perspective that I think that that the incentives. I'm not sure we need additional incentives for developers to develop because the incentive simply is to build in Leavenworth. But again, that's my reckless speculation. Um, I was discouraged when. Read about and you mentioned the buyout option that developers have uh to essentially opt out of doing inclusionary zoning. Developers are always that they. They are in the business of making money and if it pencils out for them to to do the buyout. I can't anticipate there to be any developer that wouldn't do that essentially. Um, because it makes them more money. So I guess my question is, do we as a city acknowledging that there's the buyout option? Do we as the city have the ability to create additional requirements or do you want to put it sticks? For developers who choose to opt out, that is to say, sure, you can opt out, but if you do opt out, we also require you do X, Y and Z.
Well, I know the opt-out program is in the state law and I I think it's there for a reason. But um and then the opt-out value could be quite high. I don't know how you. Um, put a dollar value on that. So I I don't have enough information to to fully respond to your question.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is that while developers have the ability and right to opt out. The city can set what that opt-out number is. As far as, do if, does that make sense?
She froze again.
I didn't, I I wa- I wasn't sure if she froze. I get that look a lot.
Uh, we would be able to set, we would be able to establish that value and I think it would be good, like Lilith had suggested. If we want to pursue this, it would be good to get. That consultant that would do the financials for us to not only cover, you know, in our specific Leavenworth market. What is going to be the percentage threshold that will make this pencil for people?
Right.
And we still have teeth.
Yeah.
And also based on those economics. What is an appropriate value per lot? Or for opt-out value that we would then be able to put into affordable housing fund.
All right, thank you.
See, I think that pushback's.
Thank you, Ann.
Not the building itself, the density, I think is what. Hey, Lilith, how many calls did you get on Pete Olson's place over there on Stafford Street?
For calls about what?
How the how big it is compared to the lot size, the density of it.
You you know, it sounded like a lot of people were complaining, but honestly, I think we only got two or three phone calls.
Okay.
Um, but you know, we had the whole plan set on our permit tracks. Um, and I I know a few people went in and pulled the plansets and really looked at them. Um, but yeah, no, I wasn't hearing from huge number.
Yeah, because you you saw them.
Well, and part of the part of the incentive wouldn't necessarily be greater build out of the lot. It would be a higher density number of units, like in the code that we currently have adopted for our opt-in code section. Where if you're providing, you know, based on your lot size, you know, you're developing a certain number of units. For the lot size, square footage. And then if you also are providing affordable units, you you get to increase your density and have an overall increased number of units that you get to develop. And so in some cases, that would help make it pencil for developers more. Because they get they get more units, they get more lots than they normally would.
Just don't want to set the number where the developer like Winner comes in and says, you know what? It's easier for me to just chop up the land and sell it off. Instead of building.
Yeah, the the apartments have indicated they would not have uh been interested in developing. If if it was mandated. Um, but they are have indicated that they are interested in that multifamily tax exemption. Which is a shorter duration and the, you know, it balances out quicker for them. I think it might be part of that.
I'd like to point out that um major reason of our focus was affordable housing. And um. With developers here. We're already got the density because of the code, so the density is going to happen, whether we allow mandatory or not. I think this is a very good tool to be using and develop as a as a council. Because, okay, widen your backs out, they sell it, so they don't build, so somebody else will. And I'm saying that we should make it mandatory up to ten percent of affordable housing, let them build denser. But I think we owe it, I we're we're talking about affordable housing. This isn't the only tool. But it's, hey, it shouldn't be uh an era that we leave out of our quiver as far as developing, providing affordable housing. I think it's well worth our time to.
Yeah.
Go down this road farther because pass on this and say, well, they're just going to build someplace else. I think, okay, fine, build someplace else. Someone else will come here and want to make money because they are making money. They are developing this place and they're building big time, so.
What I'm saying is that you don't want to push Reader or developer to say, you know what, I can subdivide that into lots and sell them off. Then you don't have a development at all. And he still makes money because that piece of property right now is on its third owner. So his third owner trying to develop it and hasn't, there hasn't been one rock.
Yeah, well, I just, I just.
The costs keep going up and I'm just saying that there's a fine line.
Right.
Keeping your developers. And also good accomplishing what you need.
Yeah, there's a fine line. I just think we shouldn't pass on this option. I think we. Take it farther down the road.
Lilith, is there a way to tie this to the subdivision process or is it only unit development?
I'll have to run it by legal. Under the R C W, it's only uh unit development on, you know, construction. Time of building permit. Um, I don't see any R C W that would authorize us able to use it as part of a subdivision. Um, but I can verify that with our legal.
I would like to point out, um, I came across an article called Langley, which is a town over on Woodby Island, twelve thousand people.
Yeah.
Uh, Langley Inclusionary Zoning Feasibility Analysis. That was done by the same company that did the feasibility study for the ice rink that. But um Eco West or something. I didn't get through it, but they were talking about. What we're kind of, what we need maybe is um some help and, well, I don't know, we have to go in that depth, but just. Um, there's feasibility studies that show how this might work. I certainly think we have a housing market that's strong enough to sustain it. Good grief. You know, I mean, like, look what's, look what's happening. We we do qualify as far as the housing market.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Marco.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, my question was more about um a little bit more like what uh Zeke just mentioned. Is there, are there any comparable cities that have done it like like Shaline, Lake Shalane or Kashmir? Have they done that? I know Kashmir is not really a comparable. I think Lake Shalane maybe has that. Do they have inclusionary housing?
Yeah, the city, yeah, go ahead.
No.
I I researched their online codes. I I don't see it there. I do know that um the development they did out by uh their Walmart was under a planned development. And that only allowed for industrial uses and when they modified that planned development to include residential. That's when they had an opportunity to mandate affordable units. So that they have written that into that planned development. Um, it's my understanding that the number of units um in the price point of units. And the buyout option is two point five million. And so, you know, it's a it's a chunk of change, but two point five isn't huge in that market. When you're looking at a housing authority that pays market rate for the land and then still has to build. Um, yeah, it's it it two point five would go quickly. Um, but it is that proportional share and like Ann was noting and I noted earlier. It's it's a feasibility of what works where.
Yeah, well, I mean, the city has to provide those. Uh, in a sense, the city has to make sure that we know the market is, like Zeke was saying. The market is strong enough to um to support the proportion of affordable units we are proposing in that inclusionary policy. To say, hey, look, with this number of units, you're still going to make money in Leavenworth. You're still going to be able to pencil out. So I was just curious if there was a city with a similar housing demand as we have with the housing, you know, the the average housing cost. That we're able to successfully say, yeah, we demanded twenty percent inclusionary housing and it worked. Um, based on what what I saw in the appendix, appendix.
We uh. And and again, I think that'd be a great thing to do to to get the a better handle on the finances of that. Again, you're talking about if you get ten percent of those units, if there were three hundred, you've got thirty of them, you're not getting no income off of it. It's just going to be reduced income. So yeah, I I think it'd be great to see how that would. You know, quote pencil out or at what point, but I think it'd be great to to look at doing something. Jason, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I really like the concept. Hopefully it's not too late if we do go down this path. I think we need more analysis. If the council is generally interested. Uh, and then I have a related question is, what is the status of our new and improved housing committee? I know that's not the title, but we disbanded the old housing committee and we were going to start a new one and I have not tracked. Where we are with that. Uh-oh.
To get the uh formation of council agenda, right? We just need to, yeah, we just need to get the formation of it down and start moving that forward, but. The idea again is look at these specific housing proposals and ways to get affordable housing is the big.
Yeah, I I like the concept, but I think uh we need more analysis to know if it would work here and what that would look like. Appreciate the introduction.
All right, let's go. What do you need to move on? We've got uh ice rink discussion. Marco.
Hey there, thank you. Um, so I'm just going to start off with quickly uh sharing a screen for a second.
Resolution.
Yeah, I have it.
Yeah. Oh, perfect. Is that what you're sharing?
Yeah, I'm going to share that quickly and then I'm going to share a screen again, so.
Um, thanks.
Okay, oh, sorry, this is uh. Okay, all right, can you guys see that? The resolution?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. Basically, it says the city sees value in an ice rink and it really started with two gentlemen. Um, who are the executive board members of the Leavenworth Ski Hill Heritage Foundation, Tony and Mike, Tony Kaiser and Mike Cummings. Neither one could be here tonight to talk about it. So really, all I wanted to do right now was to give you guys a little bit of a history of what happened. Because when I talk about it and I brought it up a few times, I feel like nobody really knows the true story. So back when uh Rob Eaton was mayor and Tony and Mike were all working together, they decided. Based on a nineteen, I think a nineteen seventies and then a future um. Maybe a two thousand and five feasibility that ice rinks were in demand. So they worked with the city, the port and um and funded a feasibility study. Which then the city uh the the city first passed this resolution, which basically said, we acknowledge that people want this. We acknowledge that there should be a location downtown. We acknowledge it will bring value to the city. Um, you can read all the wheras, uh, all these people support it. And um they they collaborated with the port in a thirty thousand dollar feasibility study. Which is this one that Zeke was talking about earlier, this this company right here. Yeah, you get it. Uh, hold on, right here. Okay, it's in Northwest. These these people did it. Their conclusion without me, it was thirty thousand dollars that the city invested ten of it. And their conclusion was that twenty-four percent of the residents wanted the ice rink and would use it regularly. And twenty percent of visitors would use it regularly. And so I ran those because they said, you know, basically Joel at the time said, oh, ice rinks don't make money. And so they said if it made money, which it would based on those numbers, and if people wanted it, the city would do it. But instead Joel and Sherry decided to shelve it, which I don't know. I know there was some some discussion about that. But I plugged those numbers into a spreadsheet based on our um, based on our footfalls and based on our um, our overall numbers. And it it's wildly profitable, which is why I'm pursuing it personally. So what I want to do right now is give you a little bit of entertainment, okay? And show you something that Tony and Mike created that I think will give you six minutes of a much better understanding of what the value of an ice rink is here. Okay, so hold on for a second. Hold on. One second.
We want counsel in two thousand and twelve during this resolution.
Yeah.
The council decision to shell that, wasn't it?
Okay.
It was because the numbers were not.
And the numbers, yeah.
The study showed that it's not possible.
Okay, I want you guys and I want you guys to just sit back and enjoy this, okay? So this is just simply for your enjoyment and I think it should answer a lot of questions about the value. You all see that? So that was the actual on the end of the fest hall.
As much as one might wish, there are some things that just don't.
As much as one might wish, there are some things that just don't come in a pill, and the greatest of these is exercise. I'm Dr. Maury Hofferman, and for reasons of physical, mental, and community health, I'm a wholehearted supporter of the Leavenworth Ice Rink. Personally, in my practice, what I see again and again is. The individuals that have greater access and participation in physical activities tend to be healthier. Both physically, but also mentally, emotionally, socially. And having yet one other opportunity, especially in the winter months, I think would be a great asset to this town.
Now, this provides an opportunity for over twelve hundred students in the Cascade School District. For some great winter time activity. It's very close to schools. Um, our students would be able to walk downtown uh. And participate either in PE activities or after school activities with such a venue.
In the nineteen forties, uh, we didn't have uh any ice rink in town, but we did have a ski job. So us kids would go up and ski in the morning and then we'd come home, trade our skis for our skates. And walk out to the fish hatchery where we skated on the spawning ponds and the canal. And whoever got there first had to scrape the snow, you know, off the ice so that we could. Have a nice smooth thing, build a fire. It was so much fun. Someone always brought a pot of stew or boiled beans and uh. And in later years, then they flooded the school area, the lawn outside the school several years. It's very exciting to all of us. Oldies who have been around for a while, that we're gonna have an ice rink. Uh, it's, it's just a continuation of all that Leavenworth has to offer, the mountains and the skiing and uh, and now an ice rink.
I think there's several appealing things about the Leavenworth Ice Rink. One of which is to provide yet one more opportunity for winter activities. Even if the snow wasn't great or in the shoulder season, I think giving one more chance for people to have an, some kind of organized activity or unorganized activity beyond just the skiing and the snowshoeing. Boy, I think the more options there are, the better it is for, for everyone. I think another aspect of the ice rink is that it will provide a range of activities for the whole community, not just skating. Or hockey, but also maybe a little slower activities, but ones that are also much appreciated, uh, such as curling.
An ice rink has been the desire of the community and part of the city parks plan for over thirty years. The city has identified the location and committed the land resources for this important project. The vision of a pavilion and ice rink will provide year-round activities and events that will build upon the destination base of Leavenworth. Initially, the project itself will create construction jobs, followed by local jobs related to year-round opportunities uh based on events and activities. These additional opportunities will further help the local, regional, and economy that is the economic engine for the state. Having the Leavenworth Pavilion and Ice Rink available during the shoulder season to attract visitors to our community, it will therefore increase our sales tax and lodging tax dollars.
Leavenworth Pavilion is right in the heart of all the activity of Leavenworth, the downtown area. The Leavenworth Arena, in the summer months when we won't have ice on the, on the floor. Has all types of opportunities for the city to be able to keep it busy. When we take out the ice and the dashboards are stored downtown downstairs, you have about twelve thousand square feet of. Concrete that you can use for dry floor activities. Now, we can put inserts into that floor so that you can have tennis courts and basketball courts and volleyball courts. So that you can continue to use it as an athletic venue, but you can also take those things out and it can be used as live theater. Car shows, farmer's market, flea markets, wine tastings. Can also be used for wedding receptions if you would like. Can be a theater. You can build up a stage on it so that there's live theater, you can bring in bands. It has all kinds and different things that can happen. And it's just the limitation of your imagination of what can we do underneath a roof that has twelve thousand square feet of concrete in it. Plus, it has the benefit of dressing rooms, public. Um, toilet facilities. It has a very nice concession area, and it has a skate rental area that in the summer. Is going to be designed so the skates can be stored downstairs and that area can become a seating area for the concession, so that it goes from a concession to maybe a whole restaurant. You can see that if you let your mind and your imagination go, that piece of property in downtown Leavenworth. Can become something very vibrant to those people that are coming to visit your town because of the extra things that can go on because the pavilion is there.
I think there is also the matter of. Duxedevopogosfilia, which is the rare but not unknown medical condition of an excess love of traveling, flying over the ice.
As former mayor of Leavenworth, I ask for your support on this important project. Okay, so quickly, um, I know I just, it consumed most of my presentation. I really wanted you guys to get the taste and feel for the vibrancy and the. Energy which with, which, with which that Tony and Mike were pursuing this when it was shelved. And I, you know, honestly, I don't agree with Joel or Sherry. The numbers speak for themselves, which is why I'm pursuing it as a private venture. However, the, the activities like the hockey, the figure skating, the curling, the speed skating, all that. Will be run by a nonprofit organization uh right now named the Leavenworth Sports Arena, because it will have a summer component as well, like he said. You can take the concrete, which is, you know, what's under the um ice, and you can put tiles on it to turn it into pickleball, basketball, tennis, and those kinds of things. I, the one thing I did not agree with Tony and Mike on was that. They were building it into what's called a, a studio ice sheet, which is about sixty percent the size of a standard NHL ice rink. Uh, I've been playing hockey my whole life and been coaching in Winachi for the last eleven years. I coached um a uh state champion team this year uh from Winachi with my two sons on it. And they're both going on to play college hockey. So. I told them you need a full-size rink because that will, like Winthrop, will bring in uh colleges and other teams who will wanna play hockey here on the shoulder seasons and bring that in. So um, I think we're pretty close to the end of my discussion, and I wanna take some questions, but my proposal would be to. Bring in a revision of the um resolution that you guys saw on, on screen. Um, and you're, I can forward it to all of you via email. I think I have at one point. And I would like to revise that to uh adopt a new resolution that would embrace an ice rink in the land that I've um, I've had an agreement with behind Safeway. I'm currently fundraising. It would be a full-size ice rink. Uh, and I'll give you a pretty quick sketch of what that looks like right now. Hold on for a second, and here's a, a Rusty Gibbs. Sketch of what it would look like behind Safeway. And here we go.
Marco, the twenty twelve resolution is in our packet.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that. Okay, so can you see that?
Yeah.
So that would be with a different orientation, that's what we would see behind Safeway. It would be. Over here would be stands with bathrooms and dressing rooms. These would be um. Where my, my cursor is would be like an office with sales and skate rentals and all that. This would be a restaurant, and if you can see this up here would be an eating deck. Where people would, you know, get their food, go up there and watch hockey with glass protection, maybe some netting. And do that. And so in the summer, the boards would come down. It would become more of an arena and, you know, the numbers, I've run them by the um. You know, I'm not a, an amazing entrepreneur, but I did run them by the Winachi Small Business Development Group, and they said. I took the numbers of um. The feasibility study said twenty percent of everyone would use it. And I didn't have them, I hoarded them. So I took five percent of everyone. And those numbers still work into a profitable situation, which is why I feel like an LLC is the appropriate way to run it, as suggested in the feasibility study. However, the sports component would be run by a nonprofit and would be eligible for things like grants and lodging tax for performing. Ice shows such as Bavaria on Ice, Oktoberfest on Ice, and, you know, a host of, of Christmas and. And, you know, Ice Fest type of um themed skating shows. And there's a figure skater in town, Elise Williams, who is. Pretty jazzed about running this kind of program. So again, my, my request will come in later. I haven't come up with some revision proposals, but I would like to see. A, support just in general from the city, because I think it's a great idea. And B, um, a revised ice rink resolution um from the city from, with, you know, council agreement that would. Support this specific ice rink that we're looking at here, not the one downtown, which I feel like was too small and wouldn't quite fit the bill. So I'll stop sharing now. Um, do you guys have any questions about that? Because I, I've developed the business plan pretty deeply, and I'm working with some Amazon investors, and I'd like to do. Some crowdfunding from the community. In fact, as quickly I'll close, Tony and Mike still have forty thousand dollars in the bank. From money they had raised from the community, and they said if you get that ice rink, Marco, it's all yours.
Okay.
Quick, any quick thoughts, ideas? Well, I guess we'll look for more from here.
Well, I'll come with the proposed resolution.
Yeah, cuz I, I like to see more of how this profit works, because when I look at their other ice rinks, they all show a loss. Uh, not that this, you know, so I'd like to see how you got there, I guess, Marco.
Well, I can give you a couple of things. The other investment the city made was they put about thirty thousand dollars into the ice rink in Lions Club Park. And that turned out to be a bust for them, because A, it was eighteen dollars a person to skate, which was, I believe, way too expensive. My, my predicted. Cost is gonna be fourteen, including skates. And the, the ice rink guy did it for two months. And the agreement between the city and Holidays on Ice was that at two hundred thousand dollars of, of gross revenue. The ice rink would share fifty percent of its profits with the city. And they gave an economic, a final economic um report of a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars after two months of operation, which. And that was a tiny rink. That was even smaller than what Tony and Mike proposed. So even based on those numbers, the numbers I'm showing from my rink, which is full-size. Are extremely profitable. So, I mean, I have no problem with it. I just need to, and you're right, Zeke, most rinks aren't profitable, but uh Jason, you have a question?
I had the same question as Zeke, but I wonder, do you think it'd be worth a while to. Update that feasibility study with new numbers and assumptions? Cuz I mean, it is. It's kinda aged out in a way. Um. So there was no, there's no construction cost, for example, and. I mean, our towns changed a lot.
Um. Their proposed cost was four and a half million dollars.
Oh, I was looking at page. Pages at, it's table one, it didn't have a construction cost for our ring.
Okay, well, I got that from Tony and Mike. It was off the top of my head, but. Do you think that with the Kraken making the second round of playoffs, we're gonna have less interest in this meeting?
No, I, I, I'm not a skater, but I think it'd be really cool to have a rink. I just wonder if it's worth spending a little bit of money to update this. Feasibility thing, since there's money in the bank. It sounds like this is eight years old. Uh, the location has changed, construction costs have changed. Our, our visitation, we have better data on visitation. I just wonder if it's worth spending money on like a revised business.
Let's, let's, let's see if we come back with a proposal and do something. We can wrap this up, cuz we gotta get a little bit of a break before we gotta start our next meeting, and so. Um, yeah.
I just, I just wanna close up what Jason said. I just close up with Jason. My numbers come in at about four million dollars, cuz it's open air, not like the one you saw. And it, four million total. And it would um, it would be similar to the Winthrop Ice Rink. So if you wanna see a good, a good.
I, that would be another cool group to hear from. Cuz I know my, my friend uses that a lot. It'd be cool to hear about their.
I spoke to Steve, Steve Bondi, the manager, and he said he wishes he had ten percent of our tourism. And I said, careful what you wish for.
Yeah. Thanks, Marco. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna make it to the meeting tonight, everybody. Sorry about that.
Well, a quick three-minute break if you guys. I just wanted to share.
Yeah.
There's minimal lot size requirements, but if you have a non-conforming lot that you're starting with. Then. You generally have a little bit more room to work with.
Yeah. And.
It's exactly what I was talking about, this is about.
Yes, I think so.
Give her a grim one.
Yeah. There she comes. Sorry. No, no, we don't start without our elder statesman.
We don't say that. I'm just glad I can say it about somebody.
Mad Royal Lady.
Yes, I'll be that.
Call to order the meeting, uh, Leavenworth City Council for May fourth, third, stand for the flight sweep. Sharon, start us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Anne Hesburgh.
Zeke Reister.
T-Ball Larry.
Marco Aurelio.
All right, Jason Leonard is absent tonight. Uh, we'll move to uh entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. By, played seconded by T-Ball. All those in favor, let me see your hands. And Marco, you show yourself or put your hand up or do something? Oh, okay. All right, passes you down this week. Go on to our public safety reports. We got Monica with us tonight. Monica, who's a corporal from the past, but also the current one, um, tag TV with Randy, but. Welcome. I'm glad to see you made it. Actually got logged in this time.
Yes, I was happy to be accepted into your group. It was like some giant firewall and we couldn't get through it, and so it worked today, so I'm happy about that. Um. I don't have a whole lot. Um, you guys got the, the report, showed ninety-eight incidents uh for service in April. Uh, there were seventeen violations issued in the month of April, uh, varying from. You know, failing to register there within forty-five days, seatbelt violations, couple speedings, I believe. So. There is some enforcement going on in, in, in the city limits of Leavenworth uh traffic-wise. Um, uh, we had eight hundred and seventy-one patrol hours. And thirty-one of those were on foot patrol, so. Um, we're averaging uh between eight hundred and fifty to. Eight hundred and ninety hours this year so far uh for service month hours. And that's about all I have, unless you guys have some questions.
You ready?
No. Good.
Thank you, Monica. And.
Yeah. Do you need some water?
I've got some. I'm, I'm just drowning myself. Um. Thank you. No, nothing out of the ordinary then, just kind of our normal stuff.
Yeah, there's been, if you go through your calls for service, if you take a look at the sheet that they sent out there, you know, most of your, uh, the majority of the calls, even out of those ninety-eight, were public assists or. Um, welfare checks, something along those lines. And there's, there really, I know that there was one graffiti call in April, so um. Other than that, is, have we, have we? Has the Parks Department seen a decrease in the, the, the graffiti in downtown?
Yes.
Yeah. It's.
We, I believe we.
We have seen an increase again, right?
Right. I believe we had a sus, we did develop a suspect, um, a person of interest, I guess I should say. Um, and uh, other than that, we've been kind of waiting and watching, and there just really hasn't been much, uh, which is good. Um, and uh, other than that, we've been kind of waiting and watching and there just really hasn't been much, uh, which is good, so.
Right. Okay, thank you. Next is from our fire district and that's we got Mike Smith here with us.
Hello. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, so uh, you have the sheet there in front of you. Uh, the main changes from uh last month is uh Chief Nels uh. Interim appointment to Chief of Operations has been made permanent, so uh. He is Chief Officer in charge of all operations of the district. Uh, again, he'll still remain available to uh help out with prevention activities. Uh, but most of his prevention duties have been delegated. Uh, additionally, Captain David Burlingame was promoted to Acting Battalion Chief. Uh, Chief Burlingame spent over twenty five years here at District Three. He's also served uh the last twenty years for the city of Marysville, where he's a captain on the ladder truck over there. Uh, myself and Marcus Wells were promoted to uh Acting Captain. Uh, Captain Wells has been with CCFD Three since two thousand eight. Uh, he previously served with the Alaska Division of Forestry and uh served for the Forest Service as a wild line, uh wildland firefighter, including seven years with the Baker River Hot Shot Crew. Uh, I've been with CCFD Three since twenty sixteen. Uh, before I came here, I volunteered in Alaska. Uh, as far as our ongoing training, uh, the high school cadets actually completed their uh live burn at Redtail Canyon today. Uh, that's where I'm at right now, as our volunteers do their yearly live burn to get qualified for their red card. Uh, and they were also able to complete their, uh, the cadets were able to complete their structure burn the first week of May. Uh, I recently completed the forty hour fundamental of fire investigation course. Uh, there's a few additional uh. Training classes and testing I have to do, but then uh that'll allow me to get my certified fire investigation technician, so we'll have someone on staff who can uh. Start investigations and secure scenes if we have uh structure fires that are suspicious. Uh, we also invested pretty heavily in swift water rescue training this year. Uh, Chief O'Brien sent five members uh to Swift Water Rescue Technician Class. Uh, with the addition of those five members, we now have uh seven technicians qualified to uh get in the water and affect rescues on the river. Uh, as far as response, uh, since the last report, we have uh responded to eight brush fires. Uh, all of those were able to be contained and kept under an acre. Uh, but as temperatures rise and the fire weather becomes more intense, uh, we're gonna start to see more fire growth than that. Uh, we also responded to Dryden uh to assist District Six. Uh, with the Swift Water Rescue Call that unfortunately ended up being the first fatality of the season. Uh, hopefully the only fatality of the season, but uh it's a pretty early start. Uh, to some river, river rescues, and we have had quite a few since then, uh, but luckily all of those have turned out okay. Uh, that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Mike?
How many, how many uh swift water calls have you made since that fatality, Mike?
Uh, I'm speculating, but probably uh three to four, so uh. We did have a couple just uh over this weekend here in our district, but they luckily they all turned out okay.
Was that many continued like Raptors or? Who's out there?
Uh, yeah, the the one we responded to over this weekend was a group of private boaters, uh, a raft flipped and uh. One of the members of the party got separated and uh they basically lost them. And uh we ended up locating them uh on the shore. We found them on the beach down by Alpensy Straws and were able to get. Uh, everybody reunited, verified that everybody was safe and out of the water.
I got a question, and maybe this is for Tom too, but any word on replacing some of these damaged fire hydrants?
So we have a budget this year to get those replaced. We just gotta get a big package put together, okay, so.
Do we have them?
Do we have the hydrants themselves? No, they have to be prepared, so.
Why are they damaged? How did that happen?
I got one on my street.
So, for example, yeah, we're council where Lack lives on Alpensy Strasse. Those are old Iowa fire hydrants. They're so old that we can't get repair kits for them right now, so if there's a fire hydrant and it's damaged, we we don't have the ability to repair it. There's about four to five in the city that are.
It takes my ability if a house catches on fire and you can't hook to a hydrant.
That's a good question. I'd have to ask legal counsel that. I'm assuming if we're not doing our due diligence, we could be held liable to some degree, but we have, we are trying to make more progress on that.
Mike, I have a quick question regarding your um, the swift water stuff. Um, are you guys shore operations or you actually guys have a like a raft or paddle boards you getting in the water at all cuz it's pretty hot flow and I I'm kind of concerned.
Uh, no, we we have the, we have the uh Sheriff's Office keeps their swift water trailer there. Uh, and there's a, I mean, all of us are on the county team as well. Uh, but CCFD Three as an organization does not have watercraft. Uh, but those, all those seven members are swift water technicians, uh, but they're gonna be coming from shore, so yeah, I mean, they can live bait, they can get in the water. Uh, but we're not yet uh putting watercraft in unless unless we're gonna be using the sheriff's office boat.
Yeah, no, the sheriff's has got a plan, a couple of trainings planned, which I hope to attend if I'm available in town, but yeah, I look forward to working with you guys on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll see you there.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Have a good day.
Thanks, Mike. Stay diligent.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we're at the point where we invite comments from the public on items that aren't on our agenda. If anybody here is, would like to just come up and tell us something. Paul?
Well, Council, uh Paul Farmland with the teacher's local seven sixty. I'm not a Leavenworth resident, but I'm a North Central Washington resident. By the way, I think an ice rink is a great thing. It has my full support. But um I wanted to thank you for letting me address you again. Um, I'm here to address the now two COF salary uh studies performed by per city employees. The first was for the non-represented employees, and when this was approved, it was made. Uh, retroactive to January one, twenty twenty two. And these were significant salary increases on top of negotiated increases already received that were provided for the represented employees. Um, on July twenty six, twenty twenty two. I came and addressed you all with what was described as. In that in inequity that left representative employees feeling unvalued and disrespected. Um, I appreciate you hearing me then and the voices of your city employees at the time. Um, I really did feel that you listened and were in some agreement that inequity needed. Subsequent to addressing you, I met with the mayor and Selby to request that the study be redone. To include the representative votes and the city agree. I received the first COF study from Selby on April thirteenth, twenty twenty two. This, however, was not all the information that was requested, and I did receive additional information on May twelve, twenty twenty two. On April twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, I asked Selby for a meeting, although we still didn't have all the information at that time. And yesterday I met with uh Mayor Selby and uh Capidow. Um. Mayor, Selby and Capidow. And with me were stewards Christian Winston and Don Jones. We really appreciated the opportunity to meet and discuss the implementation of the COF findings. In our discussion, the city mentioned that there are some flaws in the study. And we may agree that the study needs a correction or two, but we believe that the corrections can be made easily, uh, parties willing. And the implementing COF study for the representative employees should be imminent. We will soon be presenting a proposal to the city with corrections. And with that proposal, we'll be seeking retroactivity in the same manner as the non-represented uh sought and received. Your city employees have been more than patient and respectful and waiting for another survey to be conducted and implemented. There is urgency to this. There is no question in my mind where the city's employing. That inequity has been created that needs to be remedied. Until that happens, the morale of these employees is at an all time low, as they rightfully feel neglected, undervalued and unappreciated. Thank you for allowing me to give you a preview of what's to come. And what our expectations are so that you may prepare in the best possible way. To meet these needs and expectations. So again, there there will be a subsequent meeting coming up. Towards the end of June and we will have a full proposal. Just wanted to give you a preview of the best coming and to tell you what our expectation is that. We haven't forgotten about the discussion that we had with you a year ago, just about a year ago. Here we are again, so get ready, we're we're coming back. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Anybody else?
I'm calling that entire two two cross section. Um. I wanted to thank you guys for just the opportunity of opening up your retreat to the public. Friday, I came and I was and I was hoping to come for the morning, stay the whole meeting, as you know, and. And I learned so much. I learned from your eternity. I learned from Selby, who had some great ideas. I learned from the interaction of all you guys, that dialogue that I've been craving, I was available. So I want to thank you guys. It was such a great opportunity and I'm really grateful for it. So, okay, I guess.
Thanks. It's nice to have you there. Yeah.
Hello, everyone. Sean Lynn, two one second Cascade Street. Owner of Leavenworth Vacation Rentals, and I'm sorry to talk about short rentals just very briefly. I know that that's just brings everybody, oh, no, but this is very brief. I just want to comment real quick. On uh your last council meeting, there was, uh, thank you for listening to my letter, uh, that was read out loud. And also there was some conversation that was going on amongst yourselves and some of the public as well. There was some comments made about how I viewed things, and that's all I want to speak to right now is how I view things in our residential areas. The commercial conversation about vacation rentals is gonna be important, but that process is starting in planning commission. How I view things as vacation rentals in the residential area is this. I think that in nineteen ninety eight, I believe the code was passed banning STRs in the Leavenworth residential areas. I think that is a wonderful thing. I live there. I appreciate that. I think it would be overgrown by vacation rentals by now if that was not in place. That said, I'm a property rights person. I also like property rights. I think that people should be able to do what they're told to do. And I'm also a free market guy. But I just thought it was important that I get up in front of you all and and say that, and I think it's really important, so. A kind of a big conversation going on in the in the city, in the commercial areas, but I also didn't want you all to think that. We're all these vacation rental folks who just breathe, suns and guns, and you all have stuff, right? So I think that's important. I also want to open this up to uh any questions you have right now, or any one of you if you wanna have a conversation with me or anybody in the public about STRs. I'm always happy to sit down and be a nice, good, balanced here, listen and uh tell you a little bit about our industry. That's all I have unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions?
No, what in your appearance, Sean, what is the difference between a B and B and an STR?
The difference between a B and B and an STR, so STRs are also owner occupied and non-occupied, where a B and B has to be an owner occupied. Uh, you know, uh. Or, you know, rental experience. Um, owner occupied rental experiences generally cause far, far fewer nuisance issues than owner, non-owner occupied. And uh, and in my experience as a, as a property manager, many, many vacation rentals. They, most people are actually pretty good at these things. They actually don't cause that problems in the non-financial. Again, that's the difference. That's the main difference between a B and B and the health department gets involved in a B and B where they do not on short term loans.
Um, B and B bed and breakfast. So if they're not doing a bed and breakfast or doing the breakfast, are they still a B and B or should they only be a B?
So if you're getting about, if you're getting to the fact that in the residential areas that they're not serving breakfast, does that make them an STR? I guess that that boils down to what the code says on what a breakfast is, in my opinion, uh, is how I would look at that. And uh, I I don't know if that's in our LMC, but that's something to look at. I don't know, Sharon, to be honest with you, I I don't know what the, where the, where the line is right there.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you for watching.
Sorry you couldn't make the last one.
Yeah, me too.
Anybody else? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, we will move on to our presentation from Mr. Garroto, late transit.
Good evening, everybody. So I was. Looking at work products, products and realized. It had been three years since I've been out in the city, so you know, COVID kind of got in the middle of it, but it's been a long time, so I. I need to get out, just share everybody what's going on, answer questions and fess up. There's no other thing just to share what's going on. Um. I'm just gonna run through the presentation I gave you. So on the second page, we have our current operating statistics. Uh, update them a little bit, it's just was using the snapper a little bit, so that's a double. Uh, our average daily boardings, uh, we're just about thirty two hundred damage daily points a day. It's about ninety four percent over. The situation. Our annual boardings uh were nine hundred and fifty four thousand last year. Uh, we're on pace to hit one point one five million this year. Uh, so a hundred and eleven percent where we were pre-COVID. I think, wait a second, if you're ninety five percent weekdays, but you're a hundred and eleven percent overall, how does that work? Our weekends, evenings and. Sundays service, if you didn't have pre-COVID, has actually grown much faster than the city, yeah. While the peak new times are lower than they were, COVID, that's, that's an industry trend. We're actually doing quite well, uh, you know, back in fact. Based on data from Transit Association, we're one of three systems that have recovered all their ridership they had previously. The average in large systems is about sixty percent of where they were pre-COVID. And some of them much worse. South Transit is thirty five percent of where they were pre-COVID. Your cities are forty percent of where they were pre-COVID. San Francisco's thirty one percent. So the large cities have had a lot of new something in, they just have not recovered at all. Small cities have done better, we've done very well.
Richard, do you think that some of those increased uh boarding numbers are based on the transit being fare free now?
I'm sure that has impact, and I I. I I. Couldn't tell you how much because I don't think the numbers makes, it's just hard to compare what happened previously to now. Um. Modeling work says that you can expect somewhere between twenty and thirty percent increase in ridership if you go fare free, generally speaking. Um, we didn't see that kind of increase with fare free on our downtown services seven years ago. And because those were already fare free. Wouldn't expect thirty percent increase for the rest of them, so I'm thinking maybe fifty percent would be most of what we're seeing. So I think it is. Um, last year we operated two point six million miles on the system. That is a lot of miles, we put a lot of miles on our vehicles. That's partially because of the distances. We have eleven more, which is significant, like the van center is. What's? We have seventy four revenue vehicles currently, a little higher than we would like to be, but there's some. Duplication right now between. New looking buses coming, diesel, big retired, lots of paratransit vehicles that were trying to shop like things around that probably dropped sixty five. Over the next year, then grow, do you grow as soon as you did, so. We have a hundred and fifty five employees. This says eighteen operators shorts, actually twenty five. Uh. And that's a big issue we actually have not been able to do much of the expansion that was planned by the sales tax. The good news, though, is the most recent hiring. We had thirty two people uh come in and actually take a test. We have sixteen hired and we have three that have. Set it off, set it for the next class. They weren't available from the one we've been coming up. So that is the, by far, the best we've seen for years. We haven't had a class in more than four uh three years. They have sixteen. It's huge and I think we're, it's progress. The budget uh this year is twenty two thousand dollars for donations. The next slide on page three is our assistant boardings, and this is just comparing where we've been since two thousand nineteen to twenty point two. Uh, as I've indicated, twenty point three, we're already on track to see what we learned from nineteen. Um. The bus number, the dark green bar at the top. That number is actually going a lot faster than anything else we're seeing, and that's, that's a concern. Uh, link bus trips are very, very expensive, and each time you had one, you had a whole cost to it, where that's not true in the fixed transit system, having additional passengers added that would increase your costs. Part of this is. Some of the changes we've done, part of it is some of the, the way the system operates, but the, not have old staff, we wanted a better service design. That will work better when we can get fully staffed, so we'll have higher frequencies, things like. The shuttle here in Leavenworth is an operator with staff that to truncate the route because of some issues of the the. West end of town, and so it's not as convenient to fly the bus to paratransit demand. And see that pattern a couple of places. Um, if that trend continues, perhaps look at some other modifications to try to deal with that. We don't want to have a system. Become dominated by paratransit costs. Uh, back twenty years ago, uh, we were spending over fifty percent of our budget on paratransit. Had gotten down to about seventy, eighteen percent. Starting to see it grow, you have no, you don't, don't want that to occur. Should be somewhere between fifty and twenty percent of the budget. That's where. These standards are, that's about what we should be able to do, and if we can get fixed travel, what do we want on top? Uh, revenue hours. So this is revenue hours is what services available to the public. And what you can see is that we actually were highest in twenty twenty one. And what you can see is that we actually were highest in twenty twenty-one, but the service in twenty twenty-two because of lack of staff. But we are up from where we were, uh, prior to our sales tax increase and prior to, uh, to COVID. And that's related to later hours, Sunday service getting more out there, kind of trying to deliver as much of the promise that would be put forth in balance.
So I'm, I'm just curious, is, is DART similarly expensive as your, as Link Plus or?
I'm sorry.
Is the DART?
It depends. In Shalane, we've had really, really good luck with the DART in terms of its volumes, uh. They actually had to send another vehicle out there because the van's been so high for it. And if you can get enough people using it, you can bring the price down. So it doesn't, so rather than be our paratransit cost right now is probably in the range of sixty-five dollars a morning. Uh, the DART in Shalane is probably running by twenty dollars a morning, twenty. So it's a little, it's still not cheap, but it's not anywhere near that price of, uh, uh, one of the plus. Here, our, uh, DART is predominantly, how would you say, riders, uh, probably eighty percent. So you just can't get the number of bodies on the field, but we can get some more general public riders, which has been successful. Took a while to happen in Shalane, but once it did work, it's brought the price down. That's what our goal has been.
Could you quickly explain for those of us who don't know? I know what a fixed route is, but I don't know what Link Plus is and I don't know what DART is.
So Link Plus is paratransit. Under the Martin Disabilities Act, there's a requirement that wherever you provide regular fixed route bus service, you must provide door-to-door, uh, special assistance services for people with disabilities that functionally can't use the bus. That then puts us in the business of doing eligibility, determining can't use the bus. Or that, that service cannot be limited under federal laws. If you have to, it's got to be equivalent is the terminology. And so it can be very expensive and the, the way you manage BAM on paratransit is providing good fixed routes. People choose to use that instead of using the paratransit services. Uh, so that's that. DART is demand. Stands for Demand Actuated or Man Actually Response Service. Uh, it's a name that's used on the west side, so we just adopted it. But it's a general public version of Link Plus. Because people without disabilities riding, you can get more people per hour on vehicles, so you can bring some costs down. Traditionally, this is sometimes called microtransit these days, sort of a public mover concept. A little more shared, not quite as individualized as that. And typically you do this, determine where your demand is to see, do something with the regular route service. Because almost always a routed service is cheaper reporting than any type of demand response system. So it's more of a, uh, it works well in very rural areas and part of the reason we wanted to put it here is we made some promises to provide service up to the plain area. And the routed service to the plain we've operated over the last thirty years has never worked, never generated enough ridership to make it cost effective. So we were looking for some demand responsive mode that would allow us to serve some of the outlying areas.
Thank you.
Okay, revenues, um. So the chart on, on page five shows where our revenues have been. See the large increase in revenue in uh, twenty twenty. Well, that's, we had a twenty percent increase in sales tax went by ten. And so our base revenue went up, uh, twenty percent. We also had some federal bailout money that year, much larger amount of federal money the following year that came in. So the twenty twenty-one number is quite high, uh, that had received seventeen million dollars of federal funds. That was unanticipated. That got added in the mix and then the economy also boomed in twenty twenty-one. That I think it has all, yeah. And so the number is quite, quite healthy. Twenty twenty-two shows that number's climbing again. Uh, we don't have that one-time money coming in and our sales tax numbers are showing up and we're getting back to more normal numbers, uh, uh, where things are. The, the big difference between this is between the fact that we had not been able to hire the staff to offer some services and the fact we had that large increase in funding. We now have a fairly large one-time, uh, chunk money that would be used to do projects. That's something we've been self successfully worked, worked to figure out what, what's the right path, taking the best of both. Okay, um. So just paid it further on. That in here is the flyer that went out to the public on sales tax, mainly just to remind everybody what we promised, uh, to the public that's out there. And I'm too much on there to go through, but I'll just skip to the next page, which is our report part. And what that shows is we're about halfway done what we promised twenty twenty. Uh, while we've not been able to deliver all the services promised because of the lack of staffing, we have moved ahead on many of the capital projects that were there because those moved on. We should be at this point by plan about sixty-five percent. So we're a little behind, uh, where we wanted to. Again, that's all staff driven at this point, but I think we're making good progress. There's a fair amount has yet to be done, uh, area out of full plan, but, uh, I think we're in a good place. The list on page nine just gives you a sense of everything we actually have done. And there's a lot. We have made some significant shifts in our system. We've created a couple of new services. We have our tripling volunteer driver program, which provides subsidies to individuals who can find a voluntary driver to bring them around. This is primarily outside of where we provide fixed regular bus services. So the county is much larger than where our routes run. Uh, this is the way for people that live in community to be able to get a ride they need to get to town. It, uh, really works with seniors that are having limitations on their driving ability, a neighbor to help them, they get somebody else to drive them in and they give neighbors for their mileage. So it's a great program. Started rideshare program for the first time in fifteen years, uh, actually turned out quite well. Started with ten vehicles, filled that up, then five more that are full, and we're in the process of firing another five vehicles. By rideshare services, again, primarily aimed at places that we don't operate. So for example, quite a bit of service to, uh, to just down to, uh, well, stand, uh, then down to right down. So again, destinations that where people that live in our area that are going out to other places that are just beyond our bounds. That you ready, uh, dispatch on a vehicle location, all the equipment. That allows us to also do on a passenger counting and stop announcements or get on a bus, it tells you where you are, make sure that it happens all the time, which is great improvement for the public. Uh, we also have applications now for phones so that you can go to our My Stop app on the phone and find out where any bus is. Find out how to go onboard the bus at that time. Uh, so I'm late, but do you have a text service? They'll text you few minutes before the bus arrives to tell you that bus is coming. So you don't have to stand down and toll, particularly not like in community where the bus is once an hour. That's huge imperative, particularly where we have traffic issues, uh, that's.
When would we have though?
And more to the traffic issues, we also invested in and they are now here and they will be installed in Leavenworth probably in the next month and a half. Real-time arrival signs for the shelters along the path, along the, uh, avenue here. So when the traffic builds that we can't get our buses through, which happens probably ten percent of the trips we can't complete because traffic is so heavy, we can't make it to that town. And the intention is to tell people uh, once we get a shuttle operating again, not to get off, have to wait for the twenty-two, the top on shuttle be there at the park ride. Because that bus is going to turn around, get back there, try to schedule. Because we, it can take us a peak traffic an hour to, we'll come down to, um, I circle on that. And that's normally a twenty minute time, so.
How often does that happen?
Oh, every week, probably fifty times a year. And it, it's, it could be significant. I mean, the worst one we had took three and a half hours, uh, when it was, it was the summer. It's not, and it's not. It's not as predictable as you would think. It's, it's spread around, it depends on events and what the volumes are. But when it happens, it hap, it, it compounds because that bus went back. Made it into the Shalane next trip. And so the fact that it's gotten stuck here means we miss a trip that goes elsewhere in the system. It has compounding in that. So the impact of the system is really significant. It's one of the primary reasons we built that parking ride at the state of town. Seats just have, we needed a place to turn the bus around and be able to short line when those things are occurring. So those signs will allow us to be able to be the public, to make those decisions when they happen. And really the advantage of that is something that that then boost your staying on Rome, who's our finding development manager, which you really does not want to have that be every trip on paper. Because it doesn't provide as good a service for your residents. And this problem really is three days a week. It's not systematically three days a week, it's three days a week. So we can run the twenty-two all the way to icicle most of the time without a problem. That's a better commute for the people that live up here. But when it's problematic, we need to be able to make the decision, truncate it, tell people to catch the alternative service in, still provide the service. So that's the vision of that. We've got five additional signs that are being installed again in the next, probably six weeks here. So that will allow us to that. Next stage in your, uh, package, uh, shows what's left to be done. And the big ones for Leavenworth is to be your express service. So our intention was to have rec service that had much fewer stops, like in Manche from Buttonworth. Uh, almost a highway BRT, so rather than serving intermediate stops, you'd get there much faster. Our running time on our route to Leavenworth is about fifty-three, fifty-four minutes from Manche. You can drive it most days in thirty-three. So while that's not bad in transit world, it's not competitive with driving. And the idea of the express is we want to have at least five or six trips a day that are truly competitive for driving. So that people park and ride, hop and, and go, and then serve all the neighborhoods. It won't serve all the cashmere, but it will be able to get you downtown and approximately the same time striving, I think that'll be a nice improvement. But that's an add service, so we want people to be better. Anyways, I won't, I won't go into details on that. One of the big issues the board's going to be dealing with over the next year is the first item on the next slide, which is the sidewalk pathway improvements. This was actually in our valid initiative. And we don't really have a plan for how to do this yet. Uh, we have six hundred bus stops in the system. I would estimate we're probably two hundred fifty to three hundred of them don't have a cycle. When you're talking about a person with a disability, that effectively means stops are inaccessible. Every bus trip starts as pedestrian trips, so sidewalks are really important elements. We don't need to have fully connected sidewalks to make buses accessible, but we do need better connections than we currently have. And so we think it makes sense for them to be investing in some of those improvements. How we do that, whether it's grant program to cities, or projects, whether this is, uh, mutual identification of what the needs are and sort of prioritizing. That's something the board's going to have and figure out what right path is and how much of the budget to allocate. This is something that I think is out there. I know initially we kind of thought this might be a grant program. I think that's probably where we'll end up, but the board didn't have that conversation, so I can speak for them. Uh, but that is, that's going to be a big topic that's coming here, I think, is to figure out how to do that, what makes sense for the agency. Next, I'll talk about our vehicle electrification. And this has been, uh, for those that have been around for a while, we speak about this, it's been an interesting project, at least. Uh, we've been doing electric vehicles now for almost thirteen years. Uh, we want, we, as we were the second in the United States to actually operate and service, uh, that first generation buses was I call them the most successful failure. Uh, we've got us, we learned a ton from them, but they did not. In seven years of operation, we never got more than forty thousand miles. Trolley, yeah. Uh, and we went through three, four different battery technologies. Our chargers met our standards. They're ninety-five percent effective, but when you use them forty-four times a day, that means they're failing once a day, which is about what they were. And that just caused all sorts of problems and came to the conclusion, we had a great two, two season system. They work really well in the spring, they work really well in fall. But we couldn't charge them in the summer because it's about too hot. We couldn't get them to start in winter, it's cold. Uh, which is a real problem with, uh, with the modern batteries. Our next generation bus, we wrote a contract that said they had to fix those problems, didn't. Uh, so we ended up having them re-engineer the vehicle for us. Uh, and actually those five replacements for, uh, no cost. And so our third generation bus, which we see in twenty twenty, has been amazingly effective. Uh, we have well, today we have twenty-three hundred vehicles in our fleet. Eleven just arrived the last eight and a half, so, but the twelve we've had for for the last three years, uh, we've put one point three million miles on them. Uh, they are the most reliable vehicle on fleet. And we are operating one-one, which the last TransUnion Conference I was at, we were the only agency in the country doing that, that we could actually replace a diesel bus with a Link Plus. Part of that's our, our hard wireless charging that we're using to extend the range, uh, those generation of buses we have have about a hundred and ninety mile range, uh, without charging. By charging, then we can take them to about two hundred and seventy, uh, miles, which will do any urban route we have. And we are, have been operating now for about two and a half months, uh, electric bus up to Leavenworth. Using a charger and running that back and forth from the highway. We will, our intention is with these new buses that have come in, that we will expand that. Most of the trips will be electric. Still probably keep three trips a day being run by our diesel vehicles because we have three trips that have more people on the bus than we have seats on our, like thirty-five footer has about thirty seats. Our thirty, forty foot buses have thirty-eight seats and we've got about three trips a day that we regularly have thirty-five people on the vehicle. So we want people seated on highway. So we'll start some pieces in for a time. Interestingly, the buses the board ordered two weeks ago, um, have a different battery. Uh, batteries have advanced, the technology's advanced. Those buses, rather than have a hundred ninety mile range, have a two hundred and fifty mile range without charging. Which means we may not need those chargers for those, because that gets us almost over the range we need to. Uh, we also did a, took a delegation to another one, so we'll get, uh, even more advanced designed bus. Those are due for those next week. So we'll see what comes out on that. But those buses have a four hundred and twenty mile range without charging. Our intention would not have charged those. That bus will actually allow us to go all the way down. We plug it in mid part of the day because those, those long distance routes actually have a clearly defined warning pattern after noon. Allow us for about an hour to charge when the drivers changing things out. So that's our plan for those.
Um, if you have buses and you, you've got the ones that can go further with the things, and, and so the other ones, do you have communities that are looking for the other ones or what happens to those?
Well, in Manche and Eastern Manche, where most of these are going to operate, we don't need more than two hundred and seventy miles. That's plenty of people on service there. Uh, the outlying communities, some of these buses that we've got will start going into service like Rock Island, Malaga. Uh, not going to do Waterville, we're not going to do, uh, any until we can get the higher capacity vehicles available for the system. But we can do just about eighty percent of our routes with technology we have today. These next generation buses, which should be delivered in about fourteen months, could probably do with the entire system. And so our thought is, once we get those vehicles, we'll be able to electrify essentially all the full size of them.
Rich, would that include, um, a shuttle system for Leavenworth? Because part of our success in moving people around here, because we have a, a high density of visitors, as you know, and we're looking.
Our intention is to restore the shuttle and that was actually why we built Charger, uh, here at Park and Ride, was to support that, that shuttle. Uh, because that's going to be a while until I can get the staff hired to put that in place. We started experimenting with our thirty-fives on the route between Manche and Leavenworth. That's working. It's a little you gotta, you gotta manage it. You gotta make sure you get to hit the charger enough, but it's worth buying. Uh, so the intention is, we will probably, I would guess the shuttle, if the hiring works the way that we hope over the next, uh, three or four classes, we could probably have that shuttle in next year's budget. So, um, maybe by, in next January, February, we can have that returned to the system. Um, and have everything electrified up here. That's, that's our expectation.
That would be outstanding. Thank you for, for getting on that because I feel like that's represents Leavenworth. We are hoping to be a little more of a greener town in that respect. But the other thing is to have in-town shuttles as well. If we could kind of tap into your source for electric vehicles and create a more robust within-town shuttle system for when we do eventually have parking garages to give people the option of, you know, getting around town with an electric shuttle and prevent them from driving downtown.
When we operated shuttles here before, when the trolley, diesel trolleys operated up here, they were very productive. I mean, they, you know, we, when we canceled them, they weren't canceled because they didn't work. They were canceled because they had one. Uh, and that was very frustrating because they actually worked quite well. And we brought them back. Again, they still worked quite well, generating plenty of ridership justified them. But when you're looking at, it's duplicated entirely by the twenty-two and you don't have enough money. when you're looking at, it's duplicated entirely by the twenty two, and you don't have enough money to operate, that's a logical thing to do. Even though it's a benefit to the community. Uh we also have been looking at smaller, our paratransit vehicles. Right now, our paratransit fleet is all gasoline powered. And those vehicles don't last very long, four to five years is their useful life. Uh we have not seen paratransit vans that don't make sense to electrify. Uh this red vehicle is on this, on these pictures, a small one that's a a Ford E Transit vehicle. The board authorized us to buy three of them uh last week, and I think they don't need a, should ride during the next couple of weeks. Uh that vehicle, you won't see up here, the range on that is sixty five miles. Uh so that's gonna be solely within Manche, East Manche. Uh paratransit tends to be pretty short trips and that probably work in town. Probably not the right vehicle, but we had federal money that was expiring and find those. So so we're gonna get that, do some experimentation. That blue vehicle that's on there is really what we think our future is. That is a Turkish vehicle. Uh that is a electric vehicle. It's made by from the outer Turkey. Uh it's about nine, nine to twelve passenger uh purpose built vehicle. For the last twelve, fourteen years, that's the, they designed this vehicle to work in the narrow streets of European cities. Uh so they're designed to shuttle through the old towns and systems. They brought a few of them into the U S. We said it grew down to Amherst, California to look at. They've got three of them operating. They got a hundred and seventy mile range. They use a BMW dry train and electrical, electrical system and and people got really positive responses. Uh there's about a hundred transit systems that are working together to try to get a waiver from the Federal Bank of America, because these are built uh in Mexico, actually. Uh to get allows to buy them on a temporary basis. And if they can show enough market, they intend to want it best. But that vehicle, thanks to us, got great promise. We're gonna have to want here three weeks. Uh they've got an agreement, let us take one third in service for a week. Let our operation take a look at it, let us get a good better sense of it. And then we'll, once we have some experience with that, we'll talk to the board about how we want to proceed, but we want to buy a few more of those to for the paratransit. If that happens, and if we do award the contract for the large forty foot buses, we should be one hundred percent electric and serviced by twenty twenty six. That's what it looks like. That'll put us about fifteen years ahead of what their requirements are. Uh and will make us the second all consistent transit states. The next, I won't put the next two, but those charts that are there, the first one compared costs of our existing diesel vehicles or existing electric vehicles. And just shows that even when you figure the capital cost of the vehicle in, it is cheaper for us to operate electric vehicles and pay for the difference in cost uh than it is to operate diesel. A big part of the reason we made this decision was with our low energy prices. It gave us the flexibility to experiment a lot sooner because there's a lot of savings. Uh the second graph is a comparison on the full size forty foot buses pairing with that bus we looked at in the Netherlands. Uh compared to our Chinese bus, the B Y D bus that we have. And even at very, very recent, giving it uh something we shared with the board, make sure that why it makes sense to go ahead and use local money to buy these vehicles. It's the, that Netherlands bus can't buy with federal funds, it's not a buy American, buy vehicle. But the Chinese vehicle is buy American, built in California. Uh but the the Netherlands bus is part of fiber vehicle and uh with the same number of batteries and same, same chemistry battery as on our B Y Ds, they get almost two hundred and forty miles out of the unit.
Richard, I have a question. You mentioned the replacement for the gasoline paratransit vehicle, you replace them every four to five years. What's the replacement frequency on the B Y D?
We have to keep them twelve. Uh we are assuming will probably will generally be about fourteen, because you can't apply for federal money to replace them until they're twelve years old. It takes about two years to get the vehicle built. So that means you usually keep it about fourteen years. The batteries are warranted twelve. Okay. Uh so the assumption is that we're gonna get the life out of the batteries. The bus go vehicle that went to Netherlands, they don't warrant their batteries that long. They think you have to replace them once over the life of the vehicle, including those costs. Uh that's me issue to see how that plays out. Uh we're not seeing degradation in our B Y D batteries. It seems to be holding up quite well. It looks like global life makes sense for them. But that's the same chemistry. We may be able to get twelve years out of the batteries we use in our bus. So I think we've learned how to manage charging, so we're not damaging the batteries and get the life. Figured out how to warm the winter and cool them in summer and so charge them. And once you found a magical piece of it, we're able to actually work and actually get the benefit. Yeah. Like we're you know, doing it for all the right reasons, but also it's really fascinating to see how we're going. Happy to answer any questions, anything?
I have your question. Are you guys able to contract and buy electrical futures? So you keep your cost down?
Um yes. It would not make any sense with P U D's running on power. We were buying diesel futures to manage our diesel prices and save workers that do those do electrical futures costs. But the P U D's given us their price uh cost structure for years and
So you know what it is?
Yeah, it's 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 very predictable what's gonna happen. It's in the value that you want that.
It's cheap, I love that.
The other part of that, though, is one of the things we're doing in the facility. Uh the batteries in the buses under federal law, under federal law, I guess it's under county law. Those batteries have to be accounted for once you get done. Because at least most electric batteries are toxic. Ours don't happen to be. There's no heavy metals in them. The electrolytes are good. There's nothing toxic about them. But um we're not gonna go to, they're not gonna go to dump. B Y D is, has already told us they want to buy the batteries that they need for life. If we don't want them, we probably will keep them and put them into long term energy storage. That's one of the ways you manage charging is you put a large bag of batteries. Six, nine megawatts with the power. What you do is you charge at a constant rate twenty four hours a day, never hit a demand charge from utility. And then when your chargers are batteries, so you take a much smaller amount of energy than bring these cables into the facility, don't bring in all the switchgear and infrastructure. It helps your capital cost down pretty dramatically. And it becomes use of your battery, because once you use it up in the vehicle, it's still good for ten or twenty years more in stationary storage, because you're not poorly, you're using it at a constant rate, the battery will last that long. And in fact, the reason B Y D aren't providing that is they see this huge market, put them under all the windmills and solar panels all over the West to provide constant power. And that really is sort of the business model for electrification, that once these batteries are done in vehicles, they're gonna be available, they're not getting to use them. These stationary things to turn our our solar and wind, which is intermittent, into all constant power all the time. So if you actually look at the curves, you can see in about twenty five years, we can actually take the system more off. So if that reality actually adds up. Thanks.
Uh so Richard, I was gonna ask you um without any plan is not to charge fares. You're just gonna drop fare out of the whole system. So how does how's Lincoln just remain sustainable? He's solely on uh sales taxes?
It's totally solely on sales tax. Now, even at our best, when we had fares and we were covering the highest percentage of costs, we recovered fares. We were covering about four and a half percent of the costs in fares. Uh on the fixture outside, closer to seven percent, but paratransit half percent. So when the average of it being that high, the main rea- I was not the I'm not an advocate for fare free. I mean, I think it actually makes sense for us. I think it makes sense in lots of environments. And today, I think it makes more sense than it has in the past uh a lot of places. But there's a benefit in having fares. It tends to be, and and most transit systems use fares as a way to control vandalism, to control just riding around, get out of coal, homeless issues. Um that wasn't really an issue in our system. While we had some of that, reality was we weren't giving homeless riding the buses because they didn't have fares, because some social service agencies buy them passes because they were low cost. Uh the main issue for me was when we went out to try and buy an electronic fare payment system, because younger people don't use cash. They wanna use their phone or rent a car or something. It was gonna be, it was a minimum of five million dollars, provide a fare collection system. They have a five year life and we only collect seven hundred thousand dollars a year in fares. And so I I just didn't make it happen. It's like, if that's the reality and what it costs to collect fares, um let alone the counting all the rest of the stuff that goes with it. And we can get more riders, which produces our cost, uh produces our overhead costs by having them on the system. And that's what our purpose is. Fare free just makes sense. Uh and on social benefit side, it's huge. And I think it makes a huge difference in the in the very low populations. When we raised our fare from a dollar to a dollar twenty five in two thousand twelve, we lost fifteen percent of our riders, actually, when four neighborhoods. That's why the board dropped it back down to the bottom, because it had a significant impact on the very poorest riders. Doesn't have much of an impact on higher income folks, but it really did on on some of those populations. And so fare sensitivity is a significant issue when, where you have that read on, I think it doesn't make sense. It's why I'm concerned with paratransit is what kind of tools can we use to try to encourage people to make the choice to ride the regular buses with a subsidy small rationale? Well, it's gonna be, if that's, I don't have a good answer for it. It might be uh fair for uh most of our paratransit riders. It's called bill call, bill call returns. They don't schedule the return. They just call from the ready. Really convenient. It's not a requirement. So maybe you charge for that and you charge for some of the stuff that's not required. Speed quarters, that'd be pretty much. It's amazing how for someone living on a thousand dollars a month, small, it's enough to make the lists. So we'll see how that goes. That's again, not my, not gonna be my problem. Uh we have the board and Christina, the CEO, is gonna commit to that choice, because I'm retiring now because eighteen.
Right. Sales tax, is that collected just from Douglas, Central Land Counties?
It's all of Southland County, and it is the Waterville, Orlando, Eastmont and the Lake Shore Land District in Douglas County, uh counties.
So essentially your service area?
That's your service area, yeah. And so the sales tax is put in that area. With one mistake that we just found, but uh uh the state never planned service out of the Douglas County part of the Schla- of the of the Lake Schla School District. Thirty one years.
Oh.
That, like our map, go, wait a second, why aren't you in? So well, they're not in. It's like, well, here's the, here's the order that put them in. It is most helpful. So I'm trying to figure that out right now.
So what percentage of our Schland County sales tax goes to link?
By ten, but it's half set right now. Uh starting in January, it would be six tenths. Uh the ballot took us from four tenths to six tenths. So we were at four tenths for twenty seven years. And then the voters put the two tenths increase, which we extended the second ten a year ago, uh because we've been some good spending money because of staffing issues. So and that actually is on the lower side of most transit systems. Uh community transit, Snowmish County is at one point two percent, Lundy is at one point two percent, uh King County is at one point one. Uh Spokane's at six tenths. Then Franklin down in the Price City is six tenths. Most of the states and cities pre-six tenths and nine tenths. We can, we can, we can go to nine tenths, but so we still have room, wanting to go back and do something else. But I don't
Yeah. You mentioned hiring strategy. Just curious what that is.
Well, we changed our advertising. We did a lot more advertising on social media. Uh we had a new contract group with our union uh in March, which which we could start advertising. Significantly higher wage structure, uh I think which is attractive. Uh our drivers started. They start training at twenty five dollars an hour, they're twenty six. Twelve weeks later, when they get out of training and be at twenty seven by January next year, uh which makes that a good working class. Uh wage in our community that's a lot more levelable and indicated difference. Three years ago, we were starting at eighteen dollars a month. So we moved that starting up a lot. Top hasn't changed all that much, because it was probably okay, but the bottom just wasn't reflecting what the market and so we've been able to work that through uh extreme discussions.
Did you just sign a new collective bargaining agreement?
And I mean, we, the board had done some incentives. We had some of the things that kind of got our wages closer to twenty four. Uh but we couldn't really advertise it because it's incentive, it's not part of base wage. And it's made it difficult to communicate. I think help kept it from we were losing operators to waste management, because they were paying twenty nine uh in network weekends. And that's the big challenge. People don't wanna work weekends. They don't want to use. This contract also has incentive, has premiums for what we're getting against nights, which we didn't have premiums for. So I think that those changes and the strategy change in the advertising seems to have made a big difference. So I'm very hopeful. I mean, I said the the fact that we actually were able to have thirty two people come in to be tested and have sixteen that fully passed our test. We've been stretching those those criterias the last months, trying to make sure we didn't have somebody in training. Uh so this is really good. This is a really solid boss and looks like a big difference.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I don't know if you remember, I was on the link board a while, you know, when you, when you came on.
Yeah. Twenty one years.
Yeah, exactly. We both go way back. All right. Next up, we've got another presentation from Brenda.
Hello.
Hello.
Brenda. Thank you for having me here. I just love this part of Shawnee County. It's really beautiful. I'm here, um Brenda Blanchfield, Schla County Solidways, um to ask you to adopt the latest solid waste management plan. Uh we are required to have a solid waste management plan updated every five years for N R C W seventy eight two oh five. We've done some really good things with the Schla County and all the cities that are in the program. We work with our solid waste advisory committee, talked on that, uh sharing on the solid waste council. So we're able to try and coordinate, get every city's voice heard and and meet all of the waste systems issues. I'll just do a little rundown through it. I assume you've all read this. The whole thing was in our packet. It was a really nice evening. Well, I can give you a little rundown, may maybe help that. Um but one of the 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 good things is that uh with our coordinated efforts, we're able to do quite a bit more than we would be if we're all independent. So um uh the chapters, uh the first couple of chapters are basically your demographics, your population trends. And um we were just involved in a recent uh survey with nine other random counties in the state. And they were trying to assess financing some of the new new programs. They they put a, the state puts a lot of new um waste stream recycling efforts, you know, there in front of us. And so they did a study to see if we were able to pay for that. And in that study, uh Schla County and all the cities within uh really came up on top. We have curbside recycling available every, to every household in the county. Uh well, not multiple houses, like apartments, but that's still an issue and it's issue everywhere. Um the state average is thirteen pounds of garbage produced every day by a person. Uh here in Schla County, we're at eleven pounds per person. That might surprise you that you think that you might do that. But it relates to everything, you know, businesses and that and such. So um we generate a hundred and three thousand tons of garbage a year and fifty seven thousand tons are recycled. And that's a a state survey. It's got some ambiguity about it. You know, you recycle things yourself and that doesn't go on the state records and some they're capturing your scrap metals that are going to this nitrous steel or plastics going to another company for recycling. Um and so uh we have um a thirty four percent recycling rate here in Shawnee. Our goal was fifty percent. I I think that's pretty good. Um um the next chapter is about reducing waste. And this has been a real big goal of the state. And we've always tried to address it. It's just not that easy. Uh just reusing your your items other than getting it recycled, the your Goodwills, repairing things. They put into the legislature, a repair bill that I'm not sure that passed, but it was requiring items like your washing machines and dishwashers to have a manual, so you can repair it or buy the buy a parts and fix them rather than getting rid of it and buying one. The recycling element, I was here before you, not too long ago, we did the um contamination reduction outreach plan. We're just having, there were just too many problems with all recycling stream. Uh a lot of contamination. They the wishful recycling, you know, you might want to um see a plastic tote and uh that only wants ones and twos, you know, but we put it in our yogurt containers and Tainers and hopefully that should work, but it can actually ruin a whole load, so, you know, we're trying to get that. Information out there for people to recycle right, um, because it really helps, uh. And we also, uh, recently purchased a program, and it's, it's available to the cities, so Waste Wizard, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to try that, it's, um. It's on our website, and it's just, um, it's a fantastic. Program where you can find out where to recycle almost anything on, um, it might be sixty miles away, but it's not. Uh, it'll identify, and so there's. What they call a widget, so if you want to put it on, on any of the cities, you're already involved in the program.
Is that what Sustainable One Edge you just worked on?
Yes, yes, exactly, sustainable one edge. Um, chapter five talks about our organics, we've had a big push on the organics recently, um. Last year, uh, H S B, House Bill Seventy-Ninety-Nine had, were required to purchase. Compost, were required to send our yard waste to be composted. And there's certain thresholds, uh, City One Anti and Shalane County had, uh, adopted procurement policy.
We did the same.
Oh, I didn't know that, that's wonderful. I might wanna add that to the. Get a copy of that. Um. So, um, and you're probably well aware of the Winton compost facility right here and in our neighborhood, so, um. And I'm hoping that's going to, um, provide an outreach outlet for us. Here we deal with apple maggot quarantine, so it's kind of double whammy on how we can do that, but with that, um, facility right in our neighborhood, that's gonna be broken. There's also a push for food recycling, um. That's gonna be a little bit harder challenge, uh. I'm not, not so much for here in this area, um, but for other areas of the county. On to that one with patience, by, by the way, so. Uh, as chapter six and seven, we talk about our solid waste collection services, um, our garbage collection, um, transfer stations. And longevity of our landfills, the Graywood Ante usual landfill has about eighty-five years of life left. Um, and that changes from time to time because they've got. They've got plenty of land, so they can open up new cells and then say, oh, now we've got ninety-five years of life left. Uh, not only that, they did just give a, um, landfill in Adams County. Um, permitting, waste management. Uh, that permitted, so it's not too much farther away, and so I think as a whole, we're in pretty good shape for garbage. Or we'd like to see it reduced. Um. Our transfer stations are in bad need of. Of, uh, improvements, they're aged, uh, they get used pretty hard. Good waste, garbage, and, and all that is quite toxic to concrete, um. Machinery gets worn pretty heavily, so we just have two little facilities, one in One Achi, but for some reason, everybody comes out to try it in. Uh, it's quite popular, uh, maybe it's the rates, um, but, uh, we've had in our plans for probably five years now. To expand that facility, uh, we just couldn't pay what. So I, I've been working on a grant that might help close that gap with public works board fund. And then, uh, Shawnee Transportation also needs some expansion, they don't even have scales there, so when you go up there. The guy just says, okay, and it, he doesn't even know some measure, he knows this so well, but. He'll just give you an assessment. It's not quite as acceptable or easy to take as when you see a number on the scale and. That, that's how much you pay, uh, rather than just. So we have some capital expenses, that's one of the primary goals, um, but some of the bigger accomplishments. Um, include the moderate risk waste facility, we got that done, we all have a place to take hazardous waste, keep our water clean in the area, and, uh. Sustain our community that way. Uh, it's run, it's working really well, and to talk to you guys today, they had seventeen households today, and that was like, like, one o'clock. Um, they're open five days a week and, um. A lot of people are utilizing. Not sure when the paint will stop, but it'll gas me, but it just keeps coming, and from studies I've read, it just, it does keep coming. Uh, I think it was a great investment, and, uh. Uh, it is just outside of One Achi on this side on the Shalane Highway, just past the. The Grand Bell across from Stenil. Next to Impact Auto, across from the, the truck station. Uh, and then chapter nine, we have, um, we talk about the, uh, best, it's all different miscellaneous ways, your hypodermic needles, biological waste. Fires, uh, construction demolition waste, that is one of the goals in here, um. Like to see, I'm not sure if we'll be able to tackle it, um, is separating out some of that material, you know, we. We'll get some brand new shower units coming in there, you know, working with Habitat for Humanity, or, or maybe some of the. Reusable lumber, or even just chipping that lumber every second one is good. Um, I think a good use, we just will need a place to do that and that. Some sort of. Um, that's about all that I have in here, um. There is an executive summary, you probably already noticed that or read that, and, uh. Is there any questions about any of these programs?
Yeah, this is Marco up here on, uh, on Zoom.
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna back to you.
No, no, it's fine, it's, uh, your. The content is fine, no worries, I'm really impressed with the, with the overall scope and, and success of your programs. Um, I was just curious, we're, we in downtown Leavenworth do not have a recycling program for our, um, visitors, so we don't have recycling containers out there. And I'm wondering if there's a way we could integrate what we're trying to do with that, and if we could implement a program, could it, could it work? In conjunction with what you're doing with recycling?
You know, I think we talked about that some time ago, um. I, I, I guess I'm not sure how that would happen, you know, I mean, like, you're talking about recycle bins down on the streets in downtown Leavenworth.
Yeah, I mean, do you guys have experience with that? I see them in the airports, I don't know what's going on in, um, you know, is, is there any big cities in Shalane County that have? Downtown recycling, like for, you know, for people downtown, that kind of thing. I think there's a lot of recyclable material that ends up in our waste, in our landfill.
Yeah, I, I agree, um, but I'm not aware of any, um. Any downtown cycling bins, um, sure that the airports are able to do that, um.
Uh, what, Council of Aurelio, I could, I could address that briefly, so, we've been working with. Uh, Ariana with Waste Loop, and we're gonna have a pilot program where we have a. Basically one recycling bin downtown, and we're gonna monitor that for contamination, and our crew is gonna have to physically take it and put it in a single stream bin. In our recycling center, so there's an operation, operational burden associated with it, but we're at least gonna start with one and see how it goes. And Ariana was gonna supply us with the recycling.
Well, and there was Tom, wasn't there, of just doing some with the, the holes, the containers.
Yeah, that's what.
That's what you're, you're looking at, because that at least reduces. That openness of throw your trash in, if it's, it looks like a round, yeah, for a can, it says cans and bottles, that's it. But, yeah, and there, and again, there, we did try it downtown, and it was just contamination was so bad that. You end up throwing it anyway, so it was. You, you could pat yourself on the back and feel good that you had a, a blue container instead of the trash containers, but. You were still throwing it away, you know, so.
You almost have to have both.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, they just use it as garbage, that's the thing, there's just too much contamination.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Well, I think there are some big cities who have managed to create successful programs with recycling, and I, I. Admit that, you know, it's, human behavior is a hard thing to, to fix, but I don't think it's an excuse to not at least attempt and try to do it, so thank you, uh. Tom, I appreciate that we're at least giving that a shot and trying to make it happen in, uh, in cooperation with Waste Loop.
Brenda, I was gonna ask you with. For the, the future of Shalane County with increasing population and companies coming into this because of the low rates for electricity. What kind of challenges do you see for the waste, uh, you know, um. Solid waste, you think that's gonna be an issue, or do you guys see any crises coming because of that? That's a huge question, I just, I.
Yeah, I don't see any crises, um, I think the companies coming in sometimes, you know, that, that's when the contractors are coming in, the construction. Is, is a big waste stream. They're not real heavy, but they're real bulky, you know, a lot of big boards and sheet rock and. So that's where I'd like to see the, the construction demolition waste, either recycled or reused somehow, so, sorting system, um. But I think we have enough capacity. Hundred years of these, hundred fifty years for garbage. All G really frowns upon incineration, um. So, um, landfill seems to be the way to go, but. You know, with all the recycling programs, you know, we were at, what, fifty-seven thousand tons of recycled material coming out of this county, um. Population growth, yeah, it still keeps growing.
Right.
So, I, I think there's a lot of people that are really keen on improving the environment. Uh, all, uh, state legislature to, you know, our city councils, um, and trying to. Sort those out, just gonna take more resources and to handle that differently.
So you see, okay, good enough, thanks.
Brenda, what sort of public outreach and, and marketing do you have, just in general, to. Be able to connect with communities like ours and, and within all of Shalane County, so that they know where. These locations and resources are, because I would imagine more people than not probably have some of. These things sitting around, taking up space in garages or on the sides of houses and that sort of thing, and would love to know where. You know, their moderate risk type resources can, can go and be safely disposed of and that sort of thing.
Right, well, we do try and keep our website up to date, it's, it's always an evolving site, because there's so many different waste streams getting addressed, um. There.
And the Waste Wizard too, we could get the Waste Wizard on our website, technically.
Yeah, it's really cool. Just do a word search for things, we also have a list serve, email out, and any information on new programs. But, um, yeah, the, the Waste Wizard program, finding about, okay.
Alright, well, thank you, Brenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I'm just gonna state this in advance, when we go to adopt the resolution, if there are any other technical questions about the plan, ask them now.
No, ask them now.
I'm an expert at the plan, I think Brenda's.
Well, she'll stick around just another minute, that's the next thing coming up, so. Got the resolution, resolutions ordinances and all those action items, and the first one is. Resolution oh six, twenty twenty-three, adoption of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight. Shalane County Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan, and Tom.
I'll give a brief intro, so, uh, thank you, Mayor Florrie. House members, good evening, members of the public, good evening, so this action item, as Mayor Florrie indicated, is an adoption of a resolution. That will formally adopt and accept the Shalane County Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan. I just wanted to make a note here that this is, as Brenda indicated, this is required to be adopted by the city every five years. Uh, Shalane County held a public hearing on April eighteenth at the regularly scheduled, uh, commission meeting. And no po, no comments were received from the public. So with that being said, if I'm asking you to ask anything further. Answer any question, further questions, please.
I would entertain a motion.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution number zero six dash two zero two three. Adopting the two zero two three dash two zero two eight, Shalane County Comprehensive Solid and Hazardous Waste one, Waste Management Plan.
Okay.
Okay, moved by, seconded by, and any other questions, comments?
I got one.
Okay.
To answer Marco's question, uh, about ten years ago, there were recycling toads downtown.
Well, that's what I said.
Yes, they were, the biggest problem was the collection part of it. They did get contaminated, but. They fill up so fast that we never had, had people go get them all the time, and it just went away. That's the problem, the volume of people in such a small amount of space, you know.
Yeah, were they, I mean, were they, because the ones in the airports have these big diagrams next to them that say this goes here, that goes there, and I know people aren't always compliant, I get that. I just think it's really important to keep our recyclables out of our landfill and. I get it.
Okay. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay. Our last item, uh, action item is also, um, item, Ski Hill Drive sidewalk improvement.
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor Florrie, this is an exciting action item, so back in twenty. For twenty twenty-one, we were awarded a sidewalk project to the Transportation Improvement Board. This was a grant to fund the construction of new sidewalk on the west side of Ski Hill Drive from U S two to Evan Street. Subsequently, we went through the design process and ultimately we just advertised this project. Uh, for construction bids, and we received. Four total bids, three local Smith, Hearst excavation, a K R C I, and one from Moses, and one contractor from Moses Lake, J and Pacific. Uh, bids range from the four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar bid to six hundred and twenty thousand dollar bid, uh, which was the highest, was from. J and Pacific out of Moses Lake, one item I do wanna note, yes, this, this bid award is over the budgeted amount for construction, however, it is seventy-one thousand under the engineer's estimate. So with these grants, when we applied for these grants, we put together a planning level estimate, and, you know, we, we, this was an estimate that was put together in twenty twenty-one, even with contingencies, we still cannot. At times, you know, get the, get adequate grant funds, however, we will be requesting, uh, additional funds from the T I B to cover the hundred and thirteen thousand dollar cap. Knocked out wood, the city of Leavenworth has been fortunate in recent years to get additional funds from the T I B. However, with that being said, we do have adequate reserves in our street fund to cover this, these additional, uh. Expenses, if, even if the T I B says, yeah, no, no more funds. And in terms of scheduled Smith excavation, based on initial conversations, they're eager to go right away, so as soon as they get. Bid award, if approved, with their paperwork in order, contracting done, and they'll, they'll start right away.
Questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to award Ski Hill Drive Sidewalk Improvement Project, restricted upon Transportation Improvement Board, T I B approval, and authorized special air to execute a contract. Between the city and Smith excavation in amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight. And twenty-five cents.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Z, seconded by Pbor and Anne, but I heard him start.
That's great.
Half second.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, we're down to reports, and.
Okay, um, May thirteenth, what I wrote in the, uh, Heidi's wagon with the other. Royal ladies that were in attendance, and, um, it was a fun parade, the chamber has announced that, um, it was like. One of the biggest, it was quite a, quite a crowd there, and, um, it's funny because I don't, I can never remember the name of those big black furry dogs. What, pardon me? Yes, um, it's so much fun to see those people are so proud of their dogs, and the. Dogs seem to be well behaved, they don't think we've had any dog attacks or anything, so anyway, that was, uh, that was fun. On the fifteenth, I was at Shalane Douglas Health Department. Among other issues, the Shalane Douglas Health District and other local health jurisdictions are warning the public, um. About, I probably won't pronounce it right. X, X, Y, Z. X, X O, X O Y, E Y, or X Y L A Z I N E.
Xylazine?
Is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah, xylazine.
Okay, xylazine, okay, a synthetic press, uh, fertilizer. That, um, is being put in fentanyl and other opiates. That, um, is being put in fentanyl and other opiates. And exiling is approved for, uh, by the Food and Drug Administration for veterinary use. People, um, that OD on, um, op- opiates which are mixed with exiling cannot be revived by Narcon. All our counties around us, including Shalane Douglas, anticipate an increase in rights laced with xylene. Throughout North Central Washington, so it's pretty scary and it's a big, huge, um. Big, huge deal, and we're losing people, the fentanyl, now they're gonna add this to it, they can't even, Narcon won't even help them, so scary. Uh, fifteenth, uh, mosquito board, the rivers peaked May fourth and fifth at ten feet. For the icicle, a full day over nine point five feet and ten point seventy two feet. For Wenatchee River, a full day over ten point five feet, and we're expected to peak just as high or higher in a few days. So they're paying partic- particular attention to the size of the larvae. The large larvae indicate that the area is not flushed out by the rising river. While a small larvae indicated that they hatched while the river was descending. And older larvae have been flushed away by the rising river, the prow sicket, which is always, uh, an issue. It was treated, um, while it was teeming with larva, and, um. They're thinking that maybe this year only one drug drug treatment will be needed. Um, they'll take advantage of the warm weather and hang traps, have an interesting. Um, deal and with with these, like, um, Jenny Jenny Mullins, who's the head, I went on a tour with her a while back. But they just have, they just go, they're in the bushes all by themselves sometimes and looking for larvae. And dipping things in the river and looking in the carpet, um, they're like really experts at what they do. Um, on, uh, May sixteenth, I, uh, was in the lap meeting and T board was kind of lap guy. On the eighteenth, the Upper Valley Historical Society Board, three of us, Matt Cage, Mary Nelson, and myself. Attended a powerhouse boards workshop at the Confluence Technology Center, um. And so, uh, it wa- it it was a lot of fun, the gal was an excellent teacher. We, it was, everything was hands on, and, um, so we learned a lot, uh, to take back to the rest, rest of the museum board. Members, I, uh, city retreat at the Vivarium Inn, we were all at that. And, um, dangerous women presents unsettled, raise your hand if you went to that. You got, wasn't that fabulous?
Yes.
Um, and I passed out these little things because they, um, they, uh, uh, designated, um. Let's see, where is it in here? Anyway, they, um, have dedicating their twenty twenty three shows to our beloved Carolyn Wilson, who's no longer with us. And so I thought you guys might enjoy reading that little piece. Um, downtown steering committee, I'll let Z report on that, and the pool opens June sixth with the following very tentative schedule. So this can be changed in a flash of 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 beam of light. But the schedule, so far tentative schedule, is Water X. For two weeks from three to four P M instead of four to five. Swim can prep and lap swim from four to six. And open swim and lap from six to seven thirty. And I, I was told I need to stress that this could change and should by no means reflect the final opening schedule. And so if anybody from their Leavenworth echo listens to this, or you know, listens to what they go to report. Um, if you're, if you mention that, please mention that, it's really tentative. Although, um, we have three live work classes which are scheduled, and we wrapped up one this week. So we have, uh, employees that, you know, are wanting to, or kids that want to be employees. And so the list is pretty, pretty healthy, but. They don't want to not ha- keep their winter job through school. And so most of them can work mornings and no weekends, so it'll be interesting. And that's it, that's my report, thanks for listening.
So the pool will be closed on weekends?
At this point, at this point. We, we've got, we've got the guards, if they pass their class, but, um, if they're unable to work weekends, then the pool won't be open on weekends. We're hoping that it'll, it'll all settle out and we'll be able to have a full meal deal, but. Time will tell.
Strange.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
Yes, uh, so on the nineteenth, uh, I along with all the rest of the city council members. Attended the city council retreat. This was my sixth annual retreat that I've done, and I have to say, I think it was the most helpful and effective retreat. I have been on, you know, these retreats are an interesting dynamic where you have to keep a thirty thousand foot view. And they're really supposed to be, um, strategic. But also there's some real important hot button issues that are discussed, and in that, the people have specific questions. And we can take conversational side streets and and you can get derailed really fast. Um, but I have to say, as far as staying on task, having direction and having momentum. As far as finding consensus amongst the council on what most of us feel is the best direction forward. Not to say that we're all moving in lockstep, but to get a sense of everybody's perspective and a sense of shared direction moving forward. It was the most, uh, effective, uh, and helpful retreat that that I've had since here. So kudos to the staff and kudos to my fellow council members for really participating. In this, in a super productive discussion, I I enjoyed it. Um, I was not able to attend the economic development meeting this morning because of a, a professional conflict, my apologies, so that includes.
Alright.
I agree that the retreat was, um, a really great. All day, uh, time with the council, I would also add that. I think that it was efficient and effective because we were building on previous work. With regard to our mission, vision, and values, when we have that as our foundation, I think there's a lot, there's. Um, a lot that we can build from that, and I think that we saw that effectiveness this last Friday. Um, I've been very busy with light transit recently, um. We had a board meeting, um, on the sixteenth. Um, Brendan discussed some of the vehicle purchases, the E Transit vehicles and the. Nine thirty foot B Y D electric bus later been purchased. Um, the E Transit vehicles have a quick delivery, the B Y Ds typically take twelve to eighteen months. So we have to order them with something with it long term in mind to get into our system within a year to a year and a half after, after. Authorizing for purchase, so, um, just kind of planning ahead for those sorts of things. Um, we're, the late transit's also busy in the hiring process for their new, uh, C E O. As Richard had mentioned, he's gonna be retiring in August, so we've been working really hard on, um. Going through the hiring process, the search committee, um, has been working hard on that, we. Did interviews a cou- a couple of weeks ago, uh, last week. The board authorized, uh, making an offer to one of our top three candidates, and that, uh, negotiation is processed. So we will hopefully have somebody hired, um, and I'll be able to report on that at our next meeting.
Great. Okay, well, I had the pleasure of walking in my first Mayfest, uh, Mayfest festival, so. Truly, uh, an event, so that was great, uh. Also, uh, just to add the same thing, I thought the retreat came off pretty well, and I think that we're gonna comment. And so we've set that up, uh, so succinctly, uh, it was really productive and well worth the time, so. Felt really something, got something done. Good job, Salvi.
Thanks.
Um, so I did, I did attend downtown steering committee, I'm gonna leave most of this to Salvi, but. The three things that we did cover was. Replacing a, uh. Orange barricade with planners, uh, some sort, and we're gonna. Um, Louis is gonna look online, we wanna purchase those and not build them, so she's gonna find some of that information out for us. Um, we also, um. Did a lot of issues with. The restroom situation where the view is, and we're working at stairs, we're had a lot of discussion on. Well, he's moving along, so that's still in, that's still in design, um. And basically, we're gonna put out a R F Q for, uh, for the, for the construction, for the design. For just that part of downtown, which is essentially the restrooms and, uh. The welcoming center, so that's where, that's where that's at. And that's my report.
So I also did attend the. Retreat last Friday, so. I agree with all you guys, it was a great process, but it's nice to see when you have fifteen or twenty different personalities and thoughts and. Opinions, but everybody was the same going. Hold it down and break it apart and put it back, yeah, there's great, I think it's, the process is great. If we could do it twice a year, it might be out. And the lunch was great. I did attend lap, lap has not changed anything other than they are continuing to work on the website, we did see some lockups, so the. New website that they're working and dropped down to try to get those, so they're not really long. Uh, there's a be done scene, so that when somebody does go to the website that. It's precise, you get your question answered, or takes you where you wanna go. So that's what they're working on now, trying to get that, and hopefully, I think. Two to three weeks, they should have it pretty well. Fix and ready to go and be launched, so. But probably by the time Troy comes and does his next report, we should have pretty good acting. Is it eighty percent, ninety percent, they they were in about sixty percent. That's it, that's my report.
Alright, Merkle, got something for us?
Uh, yeah, yes, today I, I was at the prescribed burn training, so I'm gonna be, um. Certified to light fires all over Leavenworth, it's gonna be great. No, it's very, actually very involved. Burn, it's good, really involved in terms of, you know, fuel loading and writing a burn plan and checking with the weather and making sure that the. The ecology has the smoke worked out and the, uh, D N R, it's it's a very laborious process, there's a lot of people involved. And it's, um, it's critical, I think, to help restore our forests, uh, specifically our private lands, our D N R lands. And the Forest Service is gonna be doing their own burning as part of the, the, uh, Central Washington Initiative. So I, I believe you guys are gonna be seeing a lot more prescribed burn smoke, which is much, you know, less intense than what we get in a real wildfire. And I think the window for burning is probably gonna close soon, because we're gonna see the fuels moisture drop pretty significantly here soon, which will. Prevent us from doing that safely, so, that being said, I, uh, I really, yeah, I'm really enjoying this class. It's being paid for by Cascadia Conservation District, and when I get back, we'll be part of what's called the Cascadia, uh, Prescribed Burn Association. So hopefully, we'll, we'll make some progress with that and make our forests a little better, our private forests. And, um, the other thing I did that was really fun was I went to the, uh, Cascade Kodiaks. State tournament, they made it to state, we were in, um, Koiche, which is near, uh, Yakima. We made, uh, first game, won the first game, stayed overnight, played in the second game and lost in overtime. The boys played their heart out, uh, the field temperature was about ninety seven degrees. Um, I was very impressed with the, with the effort, I was, uh, I was getting tired of just sitting in the stands watching them, because it was so hot. Uh, regardless, they, they went pretty far, I was really excited to see that, and, uh, that's my report.
Merkle, which group was that?
Which group was what?
The boys tracker, I mean, what was it?
Soccer, soccer. Oh, soccer, sorry, it's soccer, my son plays on the soccer team, and so varsity soccer. Uh, last year, they made it to the second round as well, so this year, they were kind of disappointed because it was a team they could have beat, and they lost in overtime due to some. Some kind of funky mistakes, and they missed a penalty kick, and they were all kicking themselves in the butt, and I said, no, guys, you be proud of yourself, you did a great job. And you're nothing to be ashamed of, and just make you hungrier next year.
Thank you.
Alright, that's all I got.
Alright, um, just briefly, um, so. Before our, our retreat on Friday, or no, after our retreat on Friday, but. By the way, I too felt like that was very productive, a good. I mean, sometimes retreats just drag and this one didn't, so. Um, it was great, and but afterwards, Salvi and I went and. Part rotary and a district convention in town, their annual conference in town, and we got to go and participate and. Built some bicycles for some kids that didn't have bicycles and. And I think we got them put together fairly well, they they were checked after we put them together to make sure, but, um. But anyway, that was fun, and then to welcome them, as the mayor, of course, got to do one of my ceremonial things and. Um, their theme was reimagining rotary, so I said, what better place in a town that had to reimagine itself, so. Uh, it was kind of fun, and then, um, just wanted to comment on, you know, we've got, um. A, a grant or a gift or whatever, but provided for us, um, forty bear proof cans to be used. That's about forty is about twenty thousand dollars worth of cans. From the Defenders of Wildlife, and again, I think kudos to Tom, a walk holder, who's been. You know, really, um, embracing that idea of trying to make us as bear proof as we can, and looking for opportunities and. And, you know, we've been partnering with some of the, like, the Defenders of Wildlife and the Forest Service and, you know, Fish and Wildlife Department. They're all really excited about the fact that Leavenworth wants to do something about it, so they want to be able to use. So I think it's gonna open up some others things down the line, we potentially got, uh, a manufacturer too that will. Will make the bear proof, will bear proof our three hundred gallon totes potentially, so, um. I think there's, you know, and and again, uh, it's kind of fun if we could be, uh, an example of, you know, and that's what they would like. To see a, a town and show, be able to kind of show us off and, and show what can be done, so that. Um, it's nice when you get first in line, because some of those things open up a little more for you, but anyway, and I hand it all, you know, it's all because of. Tom's excellent work on that. Um, and then just one more thing, um, as we, both Salvi and I will be attending this, uh. Association of Washington Cities has their annual conference in Spokane, it's, um, twenty through twenty second of. Of June, but, and if any of you want to attend the meeting portion on Thursday. From, you can zoom, we need, we, we can get a third person. And it's, it's Thursday, June twenty second from four to five forty five, if you wanna give up an hour and roughly an hour and a half of your time. To zoom in, you would have the opportunity to vote for your mayor as the representative of our region. So, we could get a third vote, if one of you has the time, just let me know, we can give you that. We'll register you, you have to be identified ahead of time and, uh, and then get a zoom link, but anyway. That's the extent of my report.
Who's your competition, Mr. Mayor?
My competition is actually the mayor of Shalane.
Right, Bob.
Yes, Bob.
What happens if?
You guys are both up for reelection.
What happens if, what happens, yeah, we're both up, and we both have multiple people to run against, so we both have a primary to do, so who knows? We might, we might, either one of us could end up getting elected to the Association of Washington Cities Board and then get voted down.
Would you remit, would you remain on the board, would he remain on the board if that were the case?
Um, you have to be, you have to be an elected official, so you would, you would. You would move on, but, um, yeah, it just, that's how it works out, right? I, I will say that, no, you can only let me know that you wanna be that third person, if you don't vote for Bob. Yeah, it's conditional, I'm gonna give you.
Neither Marco or Jason can do it, because. Is it secret ballot?
I know, no, Sharon, you can't pretend to, okay, that's my report.
So, right after the city council adopted some code changes at your last meeting. I took the bear proof Winton composting container that was sitting here in City Hall, and I wheeled it out by our dumpsters. So we now have a compost drop off in City Hall parking lot, um, it is on Winton schedule, we picked up on Mondays. So, just so you know, um, if you can't get into the recycling center, you can come here to City Hall to drop off your compost. As long as you're a subscriber to Witten and paying them the five dollars a month for their five gallon bucket.
As long as you're a subscriber to Winton and paying them the five dollars a month for their five gallon bucket, not that we have a way to control that, but we do have a compost um can. Here at City Hall parking lot.
If I, if I may add, uh Winton also has drop off buckets behind Sage Mountain.
Right.
If you have.
Yeah.
If you have, you know, if you're hooked up with them, but it's nice that it's here, that's.
City Hall locations. Much, it's pretty nice, it's so hard to get to.
To.
Open hours sometimes, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I've got a bunch of yard waste.
Um so retreat, not gonna give a recap, it was great, I thank you for the, uh thank you all for attending, thank you for the direction I received, I think we. Do a lot of good things um coming out of that and I'm sure we added some things to the study session um in in the near, in the near future to progress some of those projects. Uh like the mayor said, after the retreat, we both went down to the Fest Hall for the Rotary International Conference. Um we did build some bikes, they gave us no instructions, we just got together a group of people, we had to build these little bikes for kids. Um they were, they were looked at by a professional bike mechanic after we had our way with them. Um then on Saturday, the mayor did his welcome and then he had to depart, but what happened, the way they formulated this day was this. Something four D something, they had the various chapters get together and try to come up with a. And a problem, a a a community. Issue that they could reimagine. And they want, they want to use the word problem, so there were, I didn't really participate because I'm not a Rotarian and I was hanging out with some of the Yakima people for a little while. But the two Leavenworth Rotarian groups um present. Worked on, one team worked on reimagining the Osborne property into a recreation, education and community center. So that idea is definitely still out there, um while another Leavenworth group reimagined the Grange as a community and historical center.
Led by Matt K.
And the other one was led, not led by, but the superintendent, uh Tracy was up the other one. Um and then today's downtown steering committee, we discussed replacing the orange bollards with movable planters, as as Clint, as um Zeke mentioned. Uh which was per the consultant's recommendation. Um then we also received an update from A R C Architects for the Stretches Front Street Restaurant Expansion, gave them some guidance. The two different design options that they're looking at there, um they mentioned that the project should be out to bid in. January for spring twenty-four construction, but I'm sure we'll add that to the. Council study session, once the plan has has advanced, they're, they're gonna develop the two options they showed us. Into three D models. And at the next meeting on June twenty-seventh, staff will present options for the planters, um. Also receive feedback from the committee on an uh an RFQ for the next phase of the project. And then begin discussion about the merits of moving to the gazebo, which was one of the design options that I'm excited presenting.
Good.
Willis is off.
Yeah, so.
Okay, just you, Tom. Couple of days here, uh just to remind everyone, it is Public Works Week, so thank you Herr Florrie for the proclamation. If you follow the city's Facebook page, you'll see periodic division related updates and posts throughout the week, the goal is to highlight all five divisions at some point. I think we erupted three and um one. Particular person I want to highlight is Arra Arakalian, our facility maintenance supervisor who read. He refurbished the frog in the pool, wasn't just like repairing it, but he found the pan, the paint that matched, it put a whole new clear coat on the frog, it looks brand new, so shout out to Arra on that. Um I do want to thank the council for prioritizing the new public works facility campus, so we're gonna obviously be moving around running with that and talk next step. So I have a note for management team. That's it for our morning, I want, I also want to thank Amber Chittam, our public works admin assistant, for her work on the city's C D L waiver program. So we are just about. Be a uh a, an employer that's able to train folks internally to to for acquiring a commercial driver's license. This will make hiring better, a more incentive, so we can hire someone who doesn't have a C D L and train them internally to get them a commercial driver's license, which is hard to find. In a candidate these days, and I'm jumping ahead to staffing, but Richard pointed to this as well. We are struggling filling our weekend positions here at the city, we have open part-time parks and seasonal parks positions. And uh we currently have a full-time weekend position which we, we got four applicants, that's it. For a full-time that position here at the city, so we'll interview, but it is, it is tough, a lot of folks don't want to work weekends. That's what we're finding as well. Let's see, show cause hearing with the Court of Appeals associated with the ecology water rights litigation. So uh we issued a joint statement to the Court of Appeals, they granted a six-month continuance. For this, so we didn't have a show cause hearing, that was originally scheduled for this month. Uh the intent though with this continuance is to pursue, pursue direct settlement negotiations with ecology, so there'll be subsequent. Um executive sessions with our water rights legal team on this with the council. And two more updates, so Ski Hill Drive, you awarded the bid award for the phase one, we Andy put together a grant application for. A surface transportation block grant and transportation alternatives funding through the Trans- Shalane Douglas Transportation Council. For a project for continuing the Ski Hill Drive sidewalks up to Pine Street. That grant application uh was due, preliminary due date was this month, that's maybe been through the board. As it moves forward, so I'll keep updates, council update on that, last update. The cure-in-place pipe project, which is currently uh the the ally trenchless is working downtown, they encountered a couple stags, one with material procurement. So they are not going to meet the May twenty-sixth deadline to rehab the downtown sewer pipe, in addition, they found a uh collapsed lateral. That discharged a bunch of gravel to the main line, which made problems with trying to line, fortunately, there wasn't a major backup. Needless to say, the project has already experienced delays, um ally trenchless has assured us that they will work. Very closely with the businesses, restaurants, hotels downtown, have very limited disruption, so for example, they're gonna pursue night work. To line the sewer line downtown and to accommodate the hotels, they will have individual pumping by bypass plants for each hotel, so there will be no disruption. In sewer service and that's uh uh kudos to ally trenchless, they're doing that above and beyond with contracts, so. So they're working with us. That's my update.
Right? All right, well, that brings us to this magical moment, I would give a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned, seven.
Okay, move by it, move by sharing, all in favor, let me see your hands, all right, thank you all, have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.